Good evening, and welcome to the November 14th, 2022 Planning Board meeting. Could we first please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. One quick announcement. Number eight, the Town Board referral for 800 East Main Street is off. Okay, first correspondence, we got some late breaking tonight, which apply to some of the items on the agenda. We have the meeting minutes of October 17th, 2022. Any issues, alterations?
No.
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 Counselor?
Nothing from me.
John?
Nothing here.
And do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 17th, 2022?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move into the regular portion of the meeting. First on the agenda is Wendy's at Staples Plaza. This is a decision statement, location's 3399 Crumpown Road. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So Jennifer Porter, I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, and we had an opportunity to review the draft resolution and have no issues with respect to the language that's proposed. We previously appeared in front of this board on several occasions for both work sessions, as well as the public informational hearing and then the public hearing, at which we presented our testimony from our site engineer, as well as our architect, and operational testimony from the applicant. And so with that, to the extent that the board has any further questions, we're happy to answer them, but otherwise, all ready.
Okay.
The only question I have is, in our materials this evening, was a memo from New York City Department of Environmental Protection, and that was dated the end of October.
Mm-hmm.
And I just want to make sure that those concerns will be referenced in our, or do they need to be referenced in our resolution?
They don't, but you can modify the resolution to include that memo?
Yeah.
Have you read that memo, by the way?
Yes, we did, and we've actually been working with them in connection with the proposal and had submitted plans to them. So we've been going back and forth with them.
Any issues with what's in that memo?
No.
So we should reference it, don't you think?
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Okay.
Is that the same memo that we had discussed previously at the last meeting?
This is dated October 31st.
Because we had received a memo from them in connection with the October meeting, which we previously appeared at.
You want to take a look at it?
Yeah, let me just. Want to make sure that it.
There you go.
Okay.
Anything else from the board?
No.
Counselor?
I've recused myself from this.
Okay. John?
I don't have anything at this time, though.
Okay. Do I motion then to declare the board lead agency?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
We have a neck deck in front of us, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. And then finally, we have resolution, and we are going to add the city letter as referenced in it. This is a resolution approving site plan, special use permit for a drive-through, and special use permit for outdoor seating at the Wendy's Staples Plaza. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Sorry.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Great, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And to the question everybody has on their minds, we do have an application later about Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, it was just.
A little bit down the road.
They're building down the road.
That's all I heard about was the Dunkin' theory.
Still, we only get coffee.
We kicked them out and kicked them down the road.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Dell Avenue Solar Project. This is a public hearing. Location's Dell Avenue, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zaren and Steinmetz here. Pleased to be here tonight representing Seoul Systems. My client, Eric Alves Desa from Seoul, joining me along with my partner, Jody Cross. Matt Matthews, the actual property owner, is here this evening, as well as Matt Regan from TRC Engineering, our project civil engineers and visual consultants. I think most of you have a pretty good sense of what this is about, but just for the benefit of the record, a couple of quick comments. Seoul is the ground less see of this site. And the property, Eric, you can flash the property up there. The property I think we're all familiar with is Dell Avenue, across from the intersection of Route 100 and 134, just north of the Travelers Rest. The site itself is 62 acres in the R160 single-family residential zone, and the proposal before the town this evening is for a ground-mounted solar array of approximately nine acres. I want to take a step back in history just to kind of set the table for how we got here. Some of you were on the board, most of you were not, but about 11 years ago, my partner Jody Cross and I represented the prior owner of this property. We spent a great deal of time before the town processing a rezoning application in 2011 to secure a rezoning and went through a full-blown New York State Environmental Quality Review secret process with regard to 68 age-restricted townhouses. The town ultimately went through a full secret process, concluded that there was no significant adverse environmental impact associated with that project and that rezoning. The site was rezoned. We were beginning to go through the site plan process. Our client ultimately passed away. The property was then tied up in an estate and a number of legal proceedings for a while. It never went to fruition. The rezoning lapsed, and the property wasn't developed. Mr. Matthews acquired the property, and some of you should recall that we came back before the town about a year, year and a half ago, in the middle of COVID. We did a number of remote meetings, both with your board and with the Town Board, because Mr. Matthews came back before the town and said essentially, "I have two options with this property. I can resurrect what was previously approved and had already gone through full-blown SECR, and he was prepared to do 60-some-odd multifamily residential townhouses, or, at the same time, he had had solar companies knocking at the door of this property because of its unique location, its topography, its buffering, and the fact that it did have good visual content for solar." We presented this. We literally came to the town and said, "We can kind of go in either way, in either direction." We were not told either was objectionable, but we were encouraged to pursue the solar, and that's what Matt did. And then he entered into a ground lease with Eric's company. So we've spent probably the last year doing a series of studies. I should mention Seoul is literally one of the preeminent solar companies in the nation. This is an experienced company that knows what they're doing. They don't flip these sites. They build them, they own them, they operate them. So we've been working on our engineering, on our grading, on our stormwater, analysis of the sunlight and the angles of the sun. They've been working on their connections to the electrical grid, and we've been working with neighbors on the visual. One of the most important things, and actually, you can just flash over to the solar array quickly. There are two sections of the proposed solar array on the property. The northern section, the smaller section at the top, the southern, the larger section beneath it. One of the things that Eric and his team have tried to do was to figure out how best to marry a solar project to really what we had spent almost two years studying with the town in terms of grading, tree removal, land disturbance, all associated with the full-blown secret analysis that we did for the project. Eric, flip over to the next one for me. Perfect. What you have in front of you there is kind of an overlay of everything that has transpired. In orange, you see the spine road and the multifamily townhouses that we secured approval for, again, SECR and rezoning, the 68 townhouses, kind of going right through that section of the property. What they tried to do was orient the solar arrays in essentially the exact same location. Why did they do that? Because SECR took us through 19 acres of land disturbance for Croton Overlook. It's now been reduced with this application to 14 acres. SECR took us through a series of wetland impacts associated with the residential project, buffer impacts. There are none associated with the solar. There were six acres of impervious coverage in connection with the residential. There is 0.06 acres, a dramatic reduction in impervious surface area, obviously mathematically and from an engineering standpoint, resulting in a reduction in the need to manage stormwater runoff. The height of the proposed homes that were analyzed, visual analysis and otherwise, 28 to 32 feet. The maximum height of the solar array presented 10 feet ground-mounted cover. There were going to be, call it 140 residents, cars, residents, vehicular movement, zero. Occasional service folks going in to check the site over the life of the solar array, but in terms of movement, vehicular access, it's rather quiet. There was going to be some blasting. I don't want to say significant amount, but the DEIS studied blasting on the site. There's rock, those of you who've been out there know it. In this instance, the rock outcrops have been preserved. Construction of the residential project would have been an 18-month duration at a minimum. The construction duration and disturbance for the town and the neighbors here is nine acres, excuse me, nine months. So, well, the other thing that we can inform the board, and those of you who are on the sidewalk, and appreciate those of you who did get out there, learned, Seoul normally tries to maximize the amount of sun that is going to hit their solar arrays throughout the day. Why? The more sun, the more photovoltaic activity, the more solar energy, the more revenue. In this instance, in light of the process that we've been through, they have attempted to minimize tree removal, minimize the impact, and as Eric can explain better than I, they are not maximizing the sunlight hitting the solar array. This is actually a very conservative layout for them. We're really pleased that a number of you got out to do the site inspection. Anyone who did not get out to do the site inspection, if you want to, we are more than happy to get you out there. We felt that the site inspection allowed all of you to get a better sense of the site, the topography, where the arrays would go, and the visual impacts of the project. Obviously, visual impact analysis is critical. We, as I've said, have been attempting to work cooperatively with our neighbors. They have been paying very close attention to the application. We believe we can satisfy the code. We believe that we can install or see the installation of these solar arrays in a safe, sensitive fashion. The visual analysis has commenced, it is not completed. There have been line of sight analysis done from our neighbor on the Hog Hill side. There has been a line of sight analysis done from our neighbors to the south on the Newcastle side, and we expect to have that completed. Those of you that were out there saw that we've already, my client and their team have put up some tapes and erected these temporary minimally invasive structures so that the neighbors, the board, can get a sense of where the arrays are going to be. I think you can get a pretty good sense from that that the overall visual impact and overall impact of the solar array dramatically less than one would get from 68 townhouses at 32 feet in height on the property, with folks living there and lights and noise, et cetera. We're really pleased with this application. Seoul thinks this is a terrific site. All of us have to remain mindful that the state has created a mandate that we're all supposed to be pursuing a significant amount of sustainable energy over the next 10 to 13 years to try to hit the deadlines and the thresholds that they've asked for. This is an excellent site for ground-mounted solar array. This is a sustainable project that will have minimal environmental impact and maximum environmental benefit. Beyond that, Eric, you want to add anything? It's a public hearing, we have a site plan before you. We have an application pending. Tonight's a public hearing. We look forward to continuing our cooperative work with you, and I have to thank staff. John and Robin have been excellent in terms of responsiveness and keeping this moving forward, and we appreciate. Nancy's not that cooperative, but we deal with it.
You see that too, then?
Yeah, I saw her throw something earlier.
Give us a second on that.
Hey, don't get me in the middle of this. I'm going to hear it tomorrow, John, trust me. All right, with that, we have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything from the boards?
None yet.
We did have a very nice site visit this weekend. Members from the Tree Board, member from the Conservation Board and ourselves. Very informative.
I have one item. You mentioned complying with restrictions for visual, I don't know what you would call it, but the visibility of the site has developed, as proposed to be developed.
Yes.
What are the restrictions, if there were any, for the residential townhouses versus what you're proposing?
What were the restrictions that were imposed?
Were there any?
No, there were none. We did a visual analysis as SECR would require and studied the visibility of those townhouses from the neighbors. And I think John and Robin had us do something quite similar here from a number of other vantage points, elevated vantage points throughout the Turkey Mountain, Hanover Farms. There were a few other points that we looked into the site for views. This is, again, 11 years ago, views into the site of these 68 townhouses. So the standard is different. Admittedly, the code standard is different. We think we can satisfy it. We think the code standard, as some of you have already discussed, is subject to a rule of reason and pragmatism, and we intend to work steadfastly to reduce to the maximum extent possible the views of these solar arrays. I should say, I guess I didn't say this, obviously, there would be a fence around the entire site for security purposes. It may provide some degree of mitigation, but as Eric probably wants to say, he's also going to be proposing visual mitigation in the form of landscaping, et cetera. But go right ahead.
Eric Alves Desa, Project Development Manager for Seoul Systems. It is just worth noting in that Croton Overlook finding statement that when it came to visual impact, it noted that the high-voltage transmission lines were in existing visual impact and that the Croton Overlook project was no worse impact than those necessarily. Those remain there, they continue to exist. So I just wanted to add that comment.
Just failing, I hope that answers your question.
Just to follow up on Bob's question. We received today in our materials a memo from the town of Newcastle.
Yes.
Have you seen that?
Yeah, we received it this afternoon. And Mr. Bach, you indicated in your opening remarks
that your visual screening surveys were not complete. Does that mean that some of these properties that they're talking about may be added in?
So that actually has already been studied. I think your professional staff will tell you that it's in your materials. It isn't, I gather, it isn't finalized, so it may not have, not the entirety of the study has been provided to Sabrina Charny Hall over in Newcastle, but we have done it. The town knows we've done it, we haven't ignored it. Your staff made sure repeatedly that we had to be cognizant of the fact that we needed to study not just the Yorktown properties, but we had to study some of the Newcastle properties as well.
David, did you see the correspondence the Planning Board received from Community Planning and Environmental Associates?
Yes.
Do you have a reaction or a response to that?
So.
Study? I should say correspondence, I don't know.
After I laughed a little when I read it, I then decided I needed to try to take it somewhat seriously. It's unfortunate, it appears, that that well-credentialed consultant had not been apprised of what we had been through 11 years earlier, and therefore may have said some things and reached some conclusions without knowing the SECR analysis that had been done. But Jim, my position is, I think that was provided by our neighbors as a strategic hedge move. We are working cooperatively with the neighbor, and I think the neighbors very well understand that there would be potentially 68 townhouses in their field of vision with folks living there and cars and lights and noise and et cetera. And the consultant who wrote that report was obviously not cognizant of that.
Okay. Do you have any more, any response to any of the specific recommendations that this consultant makes?
We'll be doing that as we go forward from here, but I'm not going to engage in that tonight, quite frankly.
All right.
Anything, John?
Not at present.
Anything else from the board before we go to the public?
Nope.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so if anybody wishes to ask any questions, please come to the podium. Please. How are you tonight?
Good. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Board staff. My name is Clifford Davis, 202 Mamaroneck Avenue, third floor, White Plains, New York, 10601. I represent the adjacent neighbor, Riverside Trust, at 71 Hog Hill Road in this residential district. I'll be brief, but there are some critical points to make. I am not aware that the application before this board is for 68 townhouse units. It's obviously not. So for, it's not as if there was a dual application and you're weighing one application against another. It's a solar farm application. So there's a number of elephants in the room that Mr. Steinmetz has not addressed. It's a special use permit. Under this special use permit, which was enacted subsequent to what happened 11 years ago, and what happened 11 years ago is not relevant. This matter is before this board, and this board can do its own analysis. It doesn't have to rely on what was done before. Doesn't mean that you need to ignore it, but the visual impact, as Mr. Phelan pointed out, was under SECR. Under SECR, the issue of whether there is a significant adverse environmental impact is not at issue here. That could apply to certain locations. It doesn't mean it goes away, but the standard that the Town Board enacted is a dramatic standard. And I read the legislative history and the legislative history and the plain language. When you look at a statute, you look at the plain language. If it's ambiguous, then, you know, there's some wiggle room. You can go here, you can go there. But when the language is plain, and what the language says is that the solar farm with regarding an adjacent residential property has to be fully screened. It doesn't say that you have to try to screen it, that you have to try to mitigate it. It means you can't see the damn thing. Right now, on the north side, which is the smaller array, we were out there with Matt Regan of TRC. It's visible. It's visible with the human eye. Now, when my client is working with the applicant, we had a Zoom meeting this morning, we've had a number of Zoom meetings, and we've asked them to put more references out so it can be confirmed as to what exactly is going on, as to whether it could be mitigated, as to whether any of those solar panels can be relocated. But the issue is not that the solar company is, whether they are acting in bad faith. Nobody's saying they're acting in bad faith. They're coming in, they're laying their cards on the table, but it's a very hard standard, and they have to meet it. We hope that they can meet it. So we're working with them to put up references in the field so that visuals can be done, so that there can be a photo simulation, and it can show that it's fully screened. But right now, and I'm here with my visual impact analysis, urban planner George James, and we've submitted a report, and he's done this many times. He and I have worked on solar farms before. So we remind this board that with regarding this special permit in a residential zone, the standard that the Town Board imposed on this board, which this board has to follow, is their full screening. And that means you can't see it. Now, if the solar farm was in a commercial zone, which it's not, it would more go into what David was saying. Is it reasonable? Can we mitigate to the maximum, you know, practicable extent? Like more of a SECR standard. The exact language says, if the solar farm was in a commercial zone, it only requires that views be minimized to the extent reasonably practicable. Sounds a lot like SECR, but that's not what we have here. This is a residential zone, it's a special permit, it's a very hard condition, and the applicant has the burden of showing that. Now, we look forward to the applicant giving us all of their data, mitigating it if they can, relocating some of their arrays. And we would have hoped that, like when a lot of developers come in, that they ask for more than what they're really seeking, knowing that they might have to cut back. But in speaking with the applicant, I'm not sure that can be, but that's not an excuse to give them a pass. It's a very high standard, and they have to meet it. So we're hoping that they can meet that standard, but as of right now in the field, that standard is not being met, no matter how many times counsel states it. So fully screened means fully screened, and it should not be seen. We hope that the arrays can be fully screened and that when the data is submitted, that it will confirm that it is fully screened. But I just want to make sure, because it's a public hearing tonight, they have not submitted yet the visual impact, and we're still working on putting out references in the field. So at that time, once they have given us all of the data and our client actually goes out, and then we give them further input, then we would like to come back with our dog and pony show with our expert who's done a 3D model, and he can actually show the contours of the land and show that as of right now, it's visible. We're hoping that they can address it, but we don't think that it is right now. And I also think it's improper to say to the board, "Well, if you don't give us X, we're going to come in with Y." There's only one application before this board, and it's a hard standard. We would like them to meet the standard. My client would like it no better than he does not see the solar array. But they've got to show it to this board, and they have to show it to my client. But we're hoping and we're working together in a cooperative spirit to do that. I have my expert here. If you have any questions about, you know, the visual analysis, what needs to be done, and what's presently out there. So if the board has any questions of George James, he can answer that right now.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You go first.
I just want to make it clear that we don't give passes.
Oh, I'm not, I would never say that.
I'm saying this just to hear myself say it. We've been complying with this for some time now, even to our own application from the town. We've held that standard. I think we've done a lot of hard work to keep that, and I think we'll continue to do that.
Absolutely.
And I just want to make that clear, that we've held that, again, even with applications from the town. I think this is going to be probably some back and forth of what's visual and what's not. I know everybody's got their experts. It'll be, I'm sure, a duel to see, you know, what we come up with, but I just wanted to make that clear.
I think as of right now, there's not even an issue as to what can be seen. I think everybody is in agreement between both sides.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
That's what I was going to ask you. I mean, right now, we are at a public hearing on an application that's at this stage of progress, whatever it is. We're here on that application tonight. And I was going to ask you, is your position that as the application stands now, it does not comply with the screening requirements of the town of Yorktown?
Not even close.
Okay.
When you're standing on my client's property, you can see virtually the entire north array.
So can I ask a question on that? So the property, if we look at that map there, 71 Hog Hill, is that residence down at the bottom?
Yes.
Would the solar array be visible from the residence or from the tennis court? Or are you talking about being in that upper corner of the property?
I'm talking about where the visuals are being taken.
Is it visible from the residence? Is it visible from the residence?
George, you want to address that?
No.
Oh, you got it. Tom's going to get, he's going to yell at us if you don't come up here and talk to them like.
I'm curious.
Look, he's going to answer the question, but the code doesn't say from adjacent residences. It says from adjacent residential properties.
I'm just looking for a reasonable.
We'll, we'll give you the answer.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, my name is George Janes. No, it would not be visible from the residence or the tennis courts.
I don't even know if there is a tennis court.
Yeah. There is. It's, but it would be visible from a path that the owner uses to walk their dog, and they do use the forested area regularly. He says that he uses it every day.
Are you saying that a guy that walks his dog is going to be impacted by this? Is that what I just understood?
It's a visual.
I know, but I'm asking you if that's going to be the impact on this dog walker.
The standard in the code says that from an adjacent residential property, that you should not see the solar farm. Now, what you have to just.
So he just said a dog walker.
No, 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 no. He walks, my client walks his property every day, and he's going to see it.
Cliff, do you have the areas, specific areas from point A to point B to point C that the array is actually visible from?
It's VP1.
Okay, just VP1? Just one viewpoint in one?
Here's the issue.
In one spot? If I stand in one spot? That's my question.
No, no, but it's a very wide area. It's.
Well, I think we need to know what wide area, what the wide area is, since you're, what you're rightly saying is that from anywhere on the property, so.
TRC, and Mr. Reagan, he went out there. He's their, their expert of where he located it. And it's an area that, you know, it goes like this. So it's not like you're like looking, and it's only between like a tree that you see it. It's wide open. So you could pick 10 different spots.
What I'm asking, this board, this board will be provided with a map that shows all of the points or the distance of the path or the boundary from which the array can be seen, correct?
That's what the applicant is working on.
Thank you.
We were out.
So we will know, we will know at some point exactly where you're going to see it from, at what elevation.
Absolutely.
And we'll be able to do that analysis to figure out what can be done. Right.
And we'll also do a dog and pony show with 3D modeling showing exactly that.
Well, the applicant needs to know what needs to be screened. If there's an area that.
We're in constant contact with them.
Okay.
We spent about two hours with them this morning.
Clearly, clearly, they're working with you to solve for that problem.
We can, we can see that.
Okay.
But we're not sure that it can be solved. So I'm hoping it can be solved. So if, if it's solved, problem, as they say, problem solved. But if we see it, we see it.
There's an elevation. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You're telling us that if you can see the project from, from wherever you say we should knock the project down? Is that?
Correct. Well, that, I'm not telling the board what to do.
Yeah, but you're jumping a gun. We haven't even gotten to that point about visuals yet.
What I'm saying to you, the presentation, Mr. Steinmetz made references that, you know, we're going to show this and that, and you won't be able to see it. What I'm saying to you is, we went out to the site, that's how, as the application is presently drafted, you could see it, because they put reference points out in the field. And when we went up there, we were able to see it. Now, on other parts, which is the southern, they put references, reference points in the field, and it was more like in the dip, and we couldn't see it. And we're not saying to you that we can see it. We're telling you what we, what we could see is what we could see. And the reference points that were, the limited reference points that were out in the field, we could see it, and you could only see it if it was visible. And the code says it has to be fully screened. Now, perhaps there's a creative way to plant more trees somewhere, but they're working on it, but without that mitigation, presently, as the application is now drafted, you can see it, it's visible.
Mr. Davis, I'm going to quote you now. You said by the naked eye, you could see it.
Absolutely.
Now, my question is to clarify your statement. Where were you when you made, when you based that statement on being able to see it from the naked eye?
George. Why don't you explain?
It's going to be.
He was with me at the site visit.
About.
Whose naked eye was being used?
Well, I could see it. Mr. Janes could see it, but he's a technical person, so he will tell you precisely.
Because if you give us a rendering or a computer-generated topographical, excuse me, I'd like to finish first.
Of course.
You make a topographical study showing on a computer what the line of sight is, doesn't mean you can see it. It means that it could be seen if somebody had the eyesight able, to enable you to see that.
No, no. They, they.
Yes, yes.
No, no. With all due respect, you haven't been on my client's property, and you're looking down at it.
No, I was down there looking up at it.
No, no. The reference points are on the applicant's property. So if you're on my client's property and you see the yellow, which is what they put up, then you see it. Because if you don't see the yellow, then it's somehow, well, there were a couple of issues where their flagging was knocked down through, no fault of their own, I think a branch fell on it. But if you saw the yellow, that, that represented where the solar arrays were, and you could only see it if you saw it.
My, my question still remains unanswered, because I asked for clarification, where were you when you said you could see it?
Right.
By the naked eye? And you haven't answered that.
Okay, he's going to explain. We were both there at the same time.
It was, you know, in this area, right here. It's going to be visible.
Okay. So that's great, and that's helpful, but I think you need to actually define, when you say this area, those dimensions. You guys are being very specific about screening, so we need some very specific vantage points that it can be seen from, so that this board can actually.
Absolutely.
Make sure that there's effective screening. That's all I'm saying. So talking, you know, we understand that you can see it from up there somewhere.
Right.
From exactly where, we don't know yet.
The applicant is preparing a visual impact assessment. They've hired very capable consultants to do that. We have been in contact with them. We did a site visit together. We, they took photographs, they set up viewpoints, they allowed us to accompany them. Those materials will be forthcoming, right? It is, it is premature to get into the back and forth on it, because we don't have the data in front of you.
Exactly. So why are you bringing it up now?
That's exactly what we're talking about.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, we were out there, I believe that in, in the analysis, Mr. Reagan called it VP1, viewpoint 1. So if he continues to do that VP1, and we asked him to create other viewpoints, because he's doing the analysis with our assistance, and we're sort of auditing it, making sure that they're honest, which we have no, we have no reason to believe that they're not. But what we're saying is, it's at, it's at VP1. I don't think that they've submitted that analysis to us. I'm not sure if they submitted a site plan with the VP1 on it. You know if that was submitted to them? To the boards? Okay. So they've given us internal documents with a VP1, and the VP1, when we're standing there and Mr. Reagan, I was right there, he put a stake in the ground, and he wrote VP1 on it, and that is where we all saw it, and even Mr. Reagan said we could see it.
Look forward to getting the analysis.
Well, but what I'm saying is, we were out there, and we could see it. I'm just bringing it to the board's attention.
Yeah, no, I don't think anybody's arguing on that point.
And we're going to put on our full presentation, but we didn't want to put on a full presentation until the applicant had the opportunity to put in all of its information, as well as making an attempt to mitigate.
When you do that work, will the reference point on your client's property be from the dog walking path or from the edge of the property?
It's close to the edge of the property, which is where he goes. No, that's where he goes. Yeah. But there's no, I mean, there's nothing in the code that says my client cannot use parts of his property, and he's limited to only a view from his house. That, that's not anywhere in the code. And the purpose why the code was written this way was because it's a residential district. A solar farm is an industrial use. So you're putting this industrial use in a residential district, and that's perfectly fine if you don't see it. But once you see it, it's a different ballgame. So we're hoping that at the end of the day, we don't see it, but what we're saying to the board, we're giving a heads up, as of right now, in the field, we saw it.
So. Get just some data.
The only thought that comes to my mind in listening to this is, you know, since you opened up the discussion of what the board was intending to do and why they did certain things, you've got a situation where you've got elevation changes between the project site and the surrounding area. If you take the board, if you take your reading of this statute to the logical conclusion, you're going to have no solar farms in any low areas, they're all going to have to be at the top of places where no one else can see them. And we did some solar farm project approvals over on hills, across valleys, and they may very well be seen by homes out in the distant, you know, because that's just the way the topography is. And you're suggesting we need to screen off, you know, basically over the top of this, if you carry it all the way out.
That's what the code says.
No, it's adjacent, adjacent residential properties.
Adjacent residential properties?
Yes.
Have to be, that the views have to be fully screened.
That's right.
All right, we'll see. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Hi, good evening, Susan Segal. Let me preface my comment by saying that I was planning to say this after the applicant made his presentation, but before Mr. Davis made his presentation, because I'm concerned about the visual impact from other sites. So I'm going to ask you to please adjourn this public hearing so that the public has a chance to comment when they see the visual impacts, not just from this one property, but from all the others that are being done, because that appears to be one of the most critical parts, you know, of this. And I have to just also repeat a point about visual impact is different when you're looking at a townhouse that was going to be built, or you're looking at an industrial solar farm. There is a big difference, because we're dealing with a residential neighborhood. So please just adjourn the public hearing until the public gets more information, so we know what we can comment on. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Very brief, just very brief responsive comments. I'll start with Susan. Thank you, Susan, for your comments, because we agree that the analysis from other areas and other properties is, is very important. I think those of us that were out at the property and did the site walk know that from the public right-of-way, both of Dell Avenue and Route 100, and some folks from the Tree Commission were out there analyzing this, and the Conservation Advisory Council, I think we're very well protected in terms of the birmingham and the natural topography that's out there. But the analysis that Susan's suggesting is appropriate. In terms of your, her comment about the visual impact difference of residential versus the array, the board will be the judge of that, obviously. For those of you that go out there, you can see the amount of tree cover in that wooded area. We actually think that the solar array blends into the topography with its color and its lower height than lit-up residential. But most importantly, Rob, I want to make sure you did get a full answer, Rob, to your question. It is our position that the solar array cannot be seen from any of the, I believe, three stories of the residence, the tennis court, the pool, the three golf holes on the property. None of those areas afford a view of the, of the solar array. So we do think that that is important. And then lastly, while my, while my friend and adversary, Mr. Davis, has called my comments improper, I'll stand on, on what I said at the outset. The reason I wanted to make sure the board understood what went on with Croton Overlook was not because anybody thought there was a 68 residential multifamily application before you. We're obviously all quite familiar that that's not the case, but it's important to understand the amount and the wealth of studies that have been done by this board as lead agency previously. And quite frankly, if the solar array doesn't fly, then something else ends up going there. And I do think that some kind of pragmatic analysis that takes into account topography and utilization of the property is critical. And again, I'm going to renew my last comment from the, at the beginning. If those of you that didn't see it need to go out and see it, seeing it, in my opinion, having spent an hour and a half out there, brings it to life. So, thank you. We look forward to coming back when we have completed the visual analysis, and we will continue to work cooperatively with the town, the staff, and our neighbors.
I just have one question. It's more procedural. I would just request that the public hearing be continued so we can address the visual aspect, which the full data, the full data has not been presented.
That's right. I think we should.
Yep.
I don't think so. We had a notice of public hearing. I think that we should close it with a 10-day notice, like every other public hearing.
We're just waiting on information. So it's important that they, everybody gets the full scope of the project. So both the applicant and the neighbor.
The applicant made a, has to come before us again.
But they haven't presented all their information.
Can I just say something again? The purpose of a public hearing is that we can comment on the information that has been presented, and we have not been presented with the information.
We all understand that.
Okay. And I'm not necessarily concerned about.
But we have.
The one house, okay? I am concerned about all of the other views that will impact Yorktown residents, Newcastle residents, and whatever. We can't comment on what we don't know. And 10 days doesn't give us time, because there won't be any public presentation of the information in that interim. We need a visual presentation here, and then we may or may, we may not want to comment. The presentation may be sufficient and answer all of our questions, but that's the purpose of the public hearing. Thank you.
Didn't the applicant submit fairly extensive topographical maps and lines of sight for numerous locations?
All of the distant points that you're concerned about.
Yeah. Susan may not be aware, but you're right, Aaron. We've submitted VIAs from a number of different locations, but we have not completed the visual analysis, and.
It's on the website.
We, it apparently is on the website.
Yeah, no, it's, listen, we've seen it. And the last time we were here, we all commented on how very well detail-oriented it was.
We appreciate that.
It was a very good presentation. I think the issue here at hand is, and someone, correct me if I misspeak, there's one left that they're looking to do. So I'll ask you, Counselor, do you have an issue with them?
We have, genuinely appreciate the attempt to be efficient and to move the process along out of an abundance of caution, and in the spirit of full neighborly cooperation, we have no objection to the public hearing being continued to allow the record to be completed on the VIA, and, Bill, we don't want to miss the dog and pony next month.
I want to hear what the dog walker is going to be.
I'm assuming that's the dog that's coming. We'll see, we'll see you for the next hearing.
Okay, thank you.
So are we going to schedule a meeting now?
So we're going to.
Going to give them much from now, or?
So we'll, we'll.
Any other comments?
I will ask, does anybody else in the audience? I know we've heard from three.
January probably makes the most sense.
Yeah, when everybody's, yes. They'll work offline to figure one. All right. Counselor, are we missing anything?
No.
John?
Not at this time.
Okay. Anybody from the board? All right. I've motioned to adjourn the hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
All's in favor. Thank you very much. I do want to know, how come the two attorneys are the only ones with the ties on tonight?
They get 11.
Thank you both.
Three attorneys, and I don't have a tie on.
Oh, sorry.
They get 11 lines of sight?
Yeah, no, they, they put together. We spoke too, when we were out in the site there, a little bit of what's going on.
Very interesting.
Yeah. Do you mind if I just take a look?
Oh, yeah, you want to see a picture?
No, actually, I'm just going, I'm thinking about getting away from this.
Oh, oh, so.
Now we have.
This isn't my actual. We get one, you know, the tablet one, right? But the.
At the end of the meeting, or the, you know, in a work session?
Okay.
We can kind of.
Our work session.
One thing about it is that to navigate it is a little difficult.
Still going.
Yes.
Yeah, everything comes in, and then you have to manipulate it to.
Listen.
Sometimes, you know, if you go to a...
All right, if anybody does want to chat, if you could just take it outside so we can continue. Next on the agenda is the Dorchester Glen subdivision. This is a discussion of the subdivision. Location's 1643 Maxwell Drive.
Good evening.
How are you?
Great, how are you?
Good.
I feel a little lonely up here without my friends, Joe Rina, and especially Al Capellini, but I'll do the best I can. As you know, our proposal, my wife and I have a 24-acre-plus piece of property. We had an initial layout done in the R120 zone for a 13-acre subdivision, which was shown to you early on. We opted to pursue a minor subdivision with five total lots, one with our existing home, and four new lots. When you voted in October on a resolution for approval, the resolution stated that we would be paying the recreation fee for the four lots. That's not what we proposed, that's not what we discussed, it's not what we discussed with the board. It's in the minutes, it goes all the way back to April, but somehow the resolution was prepared with the recreation fee in it. We're proposing, in lieu of the recreation fee, giving the town, deeding 11 acres plus of our property, almost half the property, to the town, and keeping the four new lots on the other half of the property with our home. There was a public hearing held, there was time for public comment subsequent to the hearing. It was closed, and we moved forward. The resolution was prepared, it was never sent to me until after the meeting began, the night that you voted on it. It was emailed to me, I saw, it came to me on my phone, I went home, printed it out, read it and saw what was in it, came right back to the town, but you had already closed the meeting, saying that you would take care of it the following, at the following meeting. Following meeting, the no resolution was prepared, correcting the language, showing our intentions of the dedication of that portion of the property in lieu of the recreation fee. We were gonna put it off till the next meeting, which, as you know, because of Election Day, was a full month later, and here we are. In that time, other opinions were sought, and I know the Recreation Commission continues to emphasize their current needs of money. I will state what I stated a long time ago. I don't know the budget of the Recreation, Parks and Recreation Commission, I don't know their current demands, I don't know their future demands, I just know that money comes and goes, but the land is forever. And that's what we were talking about. There were various pieces of correspondence submitted to the Planning Department. Some of it was misleading, in my opinion, saying that the, our intention was to donate a piece of land that dead-ended into other properties, and that was never what we were proposing. I stated, in fact, that other subdivisions, and in my recent memory, going back to Foxtail Lane on the other side of town, where the Hunterbrook Trail began its journey, no pun intended, and then Beekman Court was developed, and that trail was continued, where it dead-ended at one time and then continued at another time. And then, most recently, with the Featherbed Properties application, it is now continuing again, and comes out with the approval up to Jacob Road. So I was not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. I stated that it was a link to connecting the open space to the south with Hanover East, which also connects to Hanover Hilltop via a narrow strip, which is pointed out to you as a board, and also to the people that came to the site walk. And thank you, gentlemen, for coming and taking a look at what we're talking about. It's a piece to a puzzle. That's what we were proposing. I know that the Rec Commission would still like the money, and I'm not contesting that that's what they would like. I recognize that fact, and I commend them on the work that they do. Some of the correspondents stated that, you know, land can be purchased via open space funds and everything else. I think maybe the town, the consideration of its budget should be a little more generous to the Parks and Rec Commission, so you can take that back to whomever you speak to. And maybe something can be worked out if there is something done in conjunction with open space, that the town provides something in the Parks and Rec budget where they can, you know, create trails or whatever in the future. But this is our present application, there was a public hearing, there was time for public comment. I do not want, you know, to open up another whole thing on public comment. It's the same application, it's our same intention, it has never changed. So inviting extra public comment, possibly from groups that are not official representatives of the town, either on an advisory board or a committee that has been appointed by the town, I do not appreciate, and I frankly do not want that to be part of the record. That having been said, you know where we stand.
Thank you.
Didn't we put all this to bed in April? Didn't we agree?
We spoke about it clearly in April, yes.
And, and we decided, the only thing is, we made an error in the resolution.
That's my understanding.
So why can't we go back to what we, that we originally approved in April?
You have, you have the resolution before you to do that.
So, John, why can't we do that?
We can.
You can amend your resolutions if you choose to.
So is it a process that we have to rescind the original resolution and then approve the new resolution?
No, the, the original resolution is...
That's what we're proposing.
The original was for the funding, not the property.
Right, which was never a part of the conversation, never in the record, never in the minutes at all.
So...
No, no, wasn't the resolution requiring you just to, the land?
Pay your money, and that was that.
Right, there, yeah, my recollection is, yes, it was talked about, but it wasn't talked about really in depth, and I don't recall that there was a full determination as to which way to go. The applicant did talk about whether it's, you know, we'll give it in a conservation easement, maybe you can take the land. There was discussions of that nature, yes, there clearly was. But in terms of a determination, in my recollection, it was never made one way or the other. So that's why the resolution was constructed as it was in, in that, in that moment. As of right now, you, you can amend your resolutions, you can, you know, change them, you can change the conditions, and you're doing this right now pursuant to the applicant's request. Our recommendation is to rescind the old resolution and adopt the new one, in part because we still are waiting on tree mitigation, for instance, so some of the things in there you will see again.
Correct.
You, you have to see the mitigation, no one else can do it for you, we haven't seen it yet, it's not done. So we moved some things around, and we strengthened the resolution, so our recommendation is to rescind and then re-approve. As far as your decision on the open space, whether you're taking it, you know, whatever you're doing, that's up to you pursuant to your discussion right now, and you can amend the draft resolution to reflect whatever your determination is this evening.
So what is the board's thoughts?
I, I think that he should donate the land to the town. Is that what you?
That's our proposal.
Because...
You know, approximately half the property.
You can't import land from anyplace, it's there. And for somebody to say, well, I'd rather use the money, the budgets come and go, and the land is always there. And how many times do we say, okay, all of a sudden now, oh, that's a piece of property, we could do something with it? I mean, who knows what the future holds?
Mm-hmm. And one comment I would make, in one of the pages of the package that we have, there's a map that shows the town-owned parcels.
Yes.
Right? And there's seven or eight on one page, it's one part of the town, including the area that they're including here. I couldn't tell you what those parcels are. I mean, I know some of them are little pocket parks inside of subdivisions, which seem to make sense when you're building a very large subdivision. I, I think there's a larger issue to be discussed after we resolve this, and that is, and, and again, no disrespect to the Recreation Department, because they do a phenomenal job, but that idea of putting that tax, if you will, on a subdivision, when clearly the Recreation Department is saying, we already have too many parks, we need bigger, you know, we need ball fields and things like that, we can't maintain small parks or pocket parks or what have you, that's a bigger issue to be spoken about another time. But I, I think right now, and I don't know where the Open Space Committee is on this, but 12 acres, 11 acres, let's call it, with the potential of tying together, granted, potential may not be realized, but that is a tremendous opportunity for the town.
I think so.
I, I agree.
The applicant's not looking for any compensation.
I agree.
They're trying to sell it.
One of the other comments that, that I saw in the, in the communication from, from that board is that it says dedication from the applicant, as it's evident from the site visit, that this property is not viable for future development and will remain with the applicant if the recreation fee is decided upon by the Planning Board. There's nothing to preclude John from selling that property, and I believe he's been approached to sell the property that we're talking about.
To hunters.
To someone else. Who will use it for their own use and preclude any, any use by the public. So he could very easily sell that to a third party and have no obligation to convey that to the town in the future or ever, or allow any easements over that property whatsoever, it'll be owned by a third party completely, that'll never come before this board.
I, I...
So I don't, I don't agree with that comment as part of this, but I also, I don't agree with taking the fee in lieu of the, the land. I think that, first of all, the land is greater value than the fee is calculated at.
Absolutely.
And secondly, it, it gives us the opportunity in the future for, as you say, for who knows what the future's gonna bring.
You don't know.
And I, I don't know that that's really a cost to the Recreation Department to maintain that. That's natural land that really doesn't eat any...
You know, you know what I always think about? 10 years ago, when I was in active construction and developing, who ever heard of a solar farm? Nobody.
Right.
I mean, we would go, we, I, I came before boards, and whoever thought about setting land for a solar farm? Who knows what the future brings? That piece of property may be very valuable to the town at one time.
Absolutely.
And, and just think of all of the Parks and Recreation we got. That was donated or bought sometime in the past
Yes.
For the future. So I think...
That's the example I raised, I mentioned last time, when we bought the acreage that now became the legacy ball fields and, and all that. We did not have a plan in place at that point, it was just an investment for the future that didn't cost us anything to keep the property until we developed it. And I just have, the, basically, the Recreation Commission memo to us says that they would like the money because they needed to maintain facilities they already have. That's point number one that they made, and the other point was that the costs of maintaining property, you know, is, is beyond their means at this point. But I don't see any cost in maintaining a vacant piece of property that's left in its natural state for the potential development that we've all been discussing here. I also believe that the, the potential for connecting a trail that would be, could be built and maintained by others outside of the town budget is, is, is very worthwhile, and it, to me, it's not much different than creating stubs of streets that end, that end, and then get connected later on, when, you know, when, when subdivisions are created in various areas. So given the history and the experience of the town in buying for the future and acquiring something here at no cost, is, is considerable benefit. And so I would support amending of the resolution. The only condition I have, John, is we discussed how close that trail was, you know, possible location to the wetland border, and I was wondering if it could be moved just even a few feet up, further up slope.
Some circum, yeah, there are...
That line can be changed a little bit.
Two points where it actually goes into the wetland. So the wetland comes uphill, if you will, and then comes back down. Most of the trail, as you walked the whole thing.
Yeah, we did.
Although we walked down into the wetland to circumvent the area that was uphill of it. If that were cleared and a walkway put there, then we wouldn't even be walking down into the wetland. So, you know, I think there's a number of ways. I proposed a trail, I'm not the trail guy, I mean, I walk in the woods almost every day. Wherever they, they want to put the trail, they could put the trail. You can, you could walk right across the wetland area. Wetlands, as you well know, are not just wet areas, they're areas with water, or with certain soil types, or with certain types of vegetation. And we walked well into the wetland, especially as we approached, you know, the Hanover East property, Chatham Lane, we were well into the wetland on high, dry land, but the soils and the vegetation speak otherwise to that. So, you know, if something were done to that, as, as I also expressed when we were out in the field, you know, coming over the rock wall, I think, is an issue, just because it's nice to have a natural boundary between the properties. And, and that rock wall almost perfectly bisects our property, which is why we used it as the line to say, everything on this side is ours, and everything on that side will go to the town. You know, if, if it requires the construction of a walkway over those channels, those two, you know, one isn't really even a channel, but one was, or walk, the trail going downhill, I'll leave that to the town and the present trail committee or future trail committees.
Sounds like a good Eagle Scout project, actually.
Yeah, right. There you go.
The wall, the wall will be there as a, as a marker, regardless of where the imaginary invisible line is. So if it's, if it's 10, 10 feet off the wall, you'll know that, if it's five feet off the wall, if it's on centerline of the wall, you'll know that as well. So, I mean, I think, I think the wall is good to have there.
That's the thing, and my future property owners, I mean, you know, obviously, we're not gonna live on five lots, so whoever owns that property, it's just a nice delineation where, you know, you start bringing a trail over and bringing it back, and then who knows where what it is, and then fences go up, which we never did until people were coming on our property from the Grange Fair, and we put a fence up there.
Well, you could, one thing you could do here is, there are some conditions, namely, you know, stormwater plan, tree mitigation, et cetera. You could also have a condition to refine the trail map, and along with that, refine the final boundary of the piece of land.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I would like to keep it at the stone wall, but...
Right, but I mean, you know, once, once, once we look at it, maybe we walk with some trail people and figure out that, you know, this one 30-foot section really makes much more sense on the side, this side of the wall, maybe, maybe that's what will make sense in the end.
Got it.
So.
Okay.
Our proposal is to have the stone wall divide the two, and we're willing to offer that 11.3 acres or whatever it is to the town, in lieu of the rec fee.
Okay, so let's do something.
All right, let's just check with the, our good counsel to make sure. We missing anything?
No.
Any thoughts?
I think it's been discussed at length, and John has given you the options. You can either repeal the resolution and adopt the new one, or you can amend the existing one resolution, either is fine. I think the consensus of the board is clear, what they feel is the best process to follow, so.
I think it's always cleaner, in my mind, to not have a, a resolution and then an amendment hanging around, and rather than that, we should repeal the original one and adopt a completely, a complete clean one. So I move that we repeal the original approval on this.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so...
Rescind, whatever the proper word is.
Now we're gonna have a new resolution.
Okay.
Do you want to add any conditions to it?
I would, I like the idea of just the final delineation. There may be one or two spots where this needs to vary uphill from the stone wall, just to make it a little easier, and I, I don't think it's gonna make that much difference in the overall sizes of the lots, but I would rather have the ability to make that final determination as a condition or a adjunct to that new resolution.
I would rather not, that, that's the opinion I have. But I'll, I'll repair the wall, or, you know, clean some of the trees out of the area that you want, or, I'm, look, I'm willing to work with the town, it's just, I don't want to have to go back to my boss and, and reread the whole resolution. I found an extra colon in there, by the way, and a comma that was missing, so if you're, if you'd like me to read it as if it were the minutes of the meeting.
There's some in the drawer here from when you used to sit here.
Okay, so where are we?
Let's move it.
All right?
I mean, if it means moving some of the fallen trees, and the town is okay with me doing that, I'm happy, you know, to be a part of the project, certainly.
Revote on the...
On a new resolution, yeah. I have a draft here, right?
Yeah, we have it.
Yeah.
So is, is, Aaron, is your point the delineation of the actual property?
Yeah, actually, the property line, because there's, I don't remember, I think it's on that lower bend, you know, where it cuts in on the southern, there's some area there, which I think could use a little tweaking just to...
Yeah, we could probably put it back there, so it doesn't have that. You know, the stones, some of the stones fell into like a ravine from a water course.
Yeah, I mean, if there's this existing stone wall, which probably means these were two separate pieces of property at some point anyhow.
All right.
But if there's an existing stone wall, is, is your concern that where the trail would go? Because there is no trail, there, there may be a, a trail that's there as a result of people walking and so forth, but the future state, the trail could be in a very different location.
I'd rather have the trail go downhill into...
Well, I think the problem was that... Well, I think the problem was that the wall was right on the edge of the wetlands and there was some really wet areas that we were talking about. If we went up slope a little bit, even if it's on the other side of the stone wall, it would free up some drier property on the border that he's proposed. That's all.
Yeah, I think you're, I, I mean, again, I think the risk is you introduce kind of a, where is the line at that point? I mean, I'm having this issue right now with the neighbor.
Yeah, I know. It becomes difficult to write it.
I think it's minimal. I don't think it's worthy of struggling over.
No. Okay.
Cause it's, I think it's such a minimal area. I don't think it's to be ignored, but I don't think it's significant in terms of whether this is gonna work or not.
And it's a pretty clear delineation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very clear.
Different weather, it's gonna be dry for the most part anyhow.
Well, yeah, it was raining for a couple of days before you came out. I was, I was laughing that it got postponed from Saturday to Sunday because it it's probably a little drier on Saturday in the afternoon.
So I don't see anything in the, that has to be.
I'll move the amended, I'll move the new resolution as presented.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second?
Hold in favor.
Aye.
I do have to say, I, I feel for the, uh, the Parks Board. And I do understand.
As, as do I.
Please, your question is done deal now. Please, your question.
Yeah.
Did you say motion carried?
Yeah, we're done.
Come, please.
Good question. Uh, I understand the situation and I, I agree. I'm, I'm a parks guy, trail guy, whole bit. But does this open up a Pandora's box now to any developer saying, hey, I got a little piece of property instead of paying rec fees, now I can give you this?
No, I, I think the struggle.
That's always been an option.
Well, you, I think, and what you're asking is, you know, I don't believe you're setting precedent. And what we have to look at, and we've always been geared towards, is to look at things more holistically. And I think, you know, especially, and I appreciate everybody taking their time during the walk. The, the few hours where we, we did our job this weekend, I think, right? We went out there, we spent three and a half hours in the, in the woods in two different projects. But we have to look at it holistically and the potential possibly for the Grange property and the interconnection of some of these larger parcels.
I agree with you. I'm, I'm all about open spaces.
Yeah, I, I, I have to tell you, as a, a public servant, struggling with budget, I do understand running the department and the struggles you have to maintain staff and to maintain the parks to, uh, the pristine.
Parks is a luxury. I get it. And it's a quality of life also.
Uh, in Yorktown.
I just wanted to answer.
That's true. I would say in Yorktown, it's not a luxury, right?
No, it's.
And I think the one thing I would say is that if the, and this is statement, this is a statement towards the town board. If the town board thinks that the Recreation Department should be funding its budget through these kinds of funds, that's a mistake.
That's absolutely a mistake.
Yeah.
I mean, again, it's like the tree mitigation fund too. I don't know where those monies are, what the balance is, who oversees those. But same idea is, this is money that is either or, right? So the idea back when developments were being put in and the idea was let's put in parks for the kids that are gonna be in that development or for other people to use cause they're open to everybody regardless of what development they might be in. But I think it's, you know, I think the Recreation Department deserves a bigger, bigger chunk of the overall budget. Totally different issue.
Thank you.
But a bigger, given what is a priority in Yorktown.
And talking about the tree thing too, we did discuss it at one point. And I know we've been talking about the maintenance, most importantly, of our existing trees. And that is not allowed as per the current code. And I think that was something we were talking about possibly going to the town board with, to look at possibly amending that code. Cause not only the parks areas, but our right of ways. I know, uh, Dave Paganelli, you know, would like to maintain some of these areas a little bit more. I think that's something's gotta get looked at. And I do agree, I think the Parks Department does an unbelievable job with what they have. Just the town's gotta find ways to.
Well, look, I mean, uh, you know, we've worked with, uh, from the little, the little amount of time that I've been on the town board, we've tried to work with you guys. I know that, um, we've put some stuff in your budget this year.
Right.
That wasn't already there. Um, I don't think that the town.
We're very grateful for that. Believe me, we're very grateful.
Oh, no, I know. And, you know, I don't, I don't believe the, the town board believes that this is the only way you could fund your projects. But it is an avenue with a different revenue stream that could possibly come into fruition, may or may not. You do gotta look at everything holistically. And I appreciate you guys doing that because this is a significant piece of property that's coming in. I do understand the problem with, uh, the pocket parks. Um, more and more gets put on your plate. I had an extensive meeting with Jimmy, with Jim Adomano Jr. and, and a bunch of, a bunch of the, uh, staff, uh, before the budget. And, you know, this year, we, uh, in all fairness to the town board, we, we did have a significant increase in the garbage contract, as you all know. So, um.
Everything's going up.
You know, so we're working on it and, uh, and, and, um, I want, I would love to see one Parks Department in any municipality that says, yeah, we got plenty of money. We don't need anything else. So, but, uh, but, you know, we are, I, and I know I am definitely committed to working with you guys.
Oh, absolutely. No complaints. My question is, is it possible that you could put in a resolution a case-by-case basis?
Let me, let me answer that, your question. I understand you're afraid that we're now opening the floodgates in wet, you know, in these situations. And I, I don't see that.
No.
And the reason I say that, and I want to assure the, the Rec Commission that this property has a number of unique characteristics and potential that we haven't, don't normally see. And I don't expect other properties like this to come along and, and, and just automatically be dealt with in the same way. So I, I believe in it, in, in a more conventional subdivision that doesn't have this situation. We're gonna be very sensitive to the monetary component of the, of the, uh, contribution as opposed to taking the land where, where it, it's not like this.
In the past, many years ago, you guys probably weren't even here. We have strips of, uh, uh, land that's, you got a cliff over here. It's a park property. So this is not gonna be park property anyway to begin with. It's, it's gonna be, I guess, municipal property, just like the Mahansick Trail. That's municipal property. Am I correct?
The Planning Board.
It's not parkland.
Planning Board never took strips of land for park though.
There's areas that they maintain.
The town board probably made it park to reduce the tax liability.
They have to go maintain areas that, you know, you can't, you can't even access these areas. So you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, there are. They do exist.
I mean, you know, but, all right, that's what I'm talking about.
But not on a plat from a subdivision. They, they did not take that type of land.
That's clarifying.
It's, it's governed by the code, by the way.
Okay.
So you gotta, you gotta go through the.
It started through the land development regulations that, that a subdivision had to, had to recommend donating to the town, I think it was ten percent.
Ten percent set aside for the rec fee.
And then the Planning Board had the option to preclude that and in lieu of that, take.
Take money.
Take money. But if the town board decides that they're going to set forth a policy that, cause your, your memo suggests that we don't consider taking land at all going forward, which is the other end of the argument. So right now, we get to choose whether the property that we're taking or considering taking is workable for the types of discussions that we've had tonight. But if it's by itself and not linked to something, we probably would be looking more strongly at taking the fees. But right now, it's our decision to make that evaluation. So.
Good enough.
But it started with a donation of the land, not, not a donation of money.
No problem.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just wanna say thank you to all of you, especially those who were able to make it out and walk through the rain and the wet leaves and, uh, and foreseeing the future potential. I mean, this is something that during my tenure on the board, we, you know, you wanna be forward-looking. Uh, nobody has a crystal ball, but, uh, thank you for understanding what we were proposing and seeing the value of it. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
And thank you for your volunteer time to the town. I hope the rest of the people in the town appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move into the work session portion of the meeting.
Should we close the?
We did, didn't we?
No.
No. Motion to close the, uh, regular session.
Regular session.
Second.
Hold in favor.
Aye.
All right, now we're in the work session. First on the agenda is Underhill Farm. This is a Planning Board discussion. For full disclosure, Aaron, Robin, myself, John met, uh, just to kinda catch up on some of the, uh, information that's floating around out there. And we thought it would kinda be important to kinda set the record and just have an open discussion about where this project is, what we've been doing, what steps we've taken. Cause there is a lot of, uh, back and forth in the paper and a lot of things floating around. So we just wanted to get everything straight.
So, do we have a position?
No, no, no. We just, I think we wanna talk about what we've done. And Robin did print out some very good information for us. So, John, do you wanna talk about, as we always put the pressure on you at this point, the process and where we are? And what, what we can do moving forward if we so determined. So at this point, we haven't made a decision about the, uh, impact statement. But we always have the opportunity as we work through this to do that.
Right. You have not made a determination of significance yet as required under SEACRA. You are still in the reviews, environmental review stage of the EAF and other pertinent information. You have asked for other pertinent information that has come to light through the EAF and other sources and have asked for an expansion of that information. You haven't received all of that yet. Once you get that information and it's complete to your belief, you can then make a determination to, as to the project's environmental significance under SEACRA, which could be that it is, uh, you know, a positive declaration that has at least one significant adverse impact or, you know, or issue a negative declaration, that it can move forward without going to or requiring EIS. So that's still a decision that is in the future. So you are right now still evaluating all of that environmental information. And you, you, I, I think really that you, you've made some, uh, or, or have held the common belief that you don't have enough information quite yet to make that. And that you have asked the applicant for additional and, and expanded information on some of the issues that the EAF and other sources have, have brought, you know, to light for you guys. So that's essentially it in a nutshell.
Right. And I think one of our biggest concerns, and we went to the board and the board, uh, really helped us out by, now we have an RFP that's gonna be going out for, uh, you know, a firm to look at the historical integrity of the property and what we're really looking at. I think we have to comment on that RFP, right? Or is that?
Well, they're, uh, they're going to issue the RFP, they're going to authorize the issuance of the RFP tomorrow. So you can still look at it and make comment on it for the actual body of what the RFP says.
Right. But I think that was one of the, you know, biggest concerns that came up was the property itself, the outbuildings. And, you know, we've done, I did two sidewalks now. I know the board did one early on to look at that. But I think it's important that the general public understand that we are looking at this closely. We, uh, have asked for information. We are waiting on the applicant to come back with that information. And as we get that information, we can make further determinations on what actions we feel and deem are appropriate.
Right. And the RFP will address the, uh, any concerns that, um, you know, any historical, uh, viewpoints are coming from either side, pro or for, for or against. This is coming from the town itself in a benign, you know, just unpolitical, clean way. And that's why we felt it was necessary for the town to hire, uh, to move forward with our own historian.
So that RFP, I, I think, Sergio, you just said this. It's focused on the historical aspects of the property, the buildings and everything else. And so the other issues, right, things like traffic, we've got a lot of data on traffic. There's been a lot of discussion about remedies or mitigation there. There's been discussion about the wetlands. So we've covered a lot of it.
We have.
The historical one could have a couple of surprises, I guess, right? I mean, that's always the, uh.
If it does, it does. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
Right.
You know, that's why, you know, we're trying to take this, you know, and try to take this approach where, you know, it's fair and equitable, you know? So, and that's what we're looking at.
It's proactive.
Right. And we are aware, the, the applicant's intent is still to maintain the main house or renovate, restore, make use of the main house. All of their buildings would be leveled?
Yeah.
Why I say level, they might be moved, they might be sold for materials or whatever if there's some value there. Okay. So nothing's changed there.
Or dismantled and reconstructed somewhere else.
Right, exactly.
And in reference to the traffic too, you know, we've seen through the professionals, the documentation of the improvements that'll make on that. And I think that was a huge impact. And again, as we looked at the area holistically and the potential for other development, which has been opened up by the overlay district. I think we're really digging and looking at it.
But, and not only that, that intersection, as it exists now, is, you know, a liability. I mean, it, 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 there, there were problems with that intersection, the way it's canted. It's just, I, I was, I was there trying to make a left turn right here in front of Town Hall the other day. And a car was coming down. He was trying to make a left. So he's making a left, I'm making a left. Nobody knew where we were going because if you tried, both tried to make a left, you're almost colliding into each other. So there were significant issues with that, uh, with that intersection already. And this is a, a really good opportunity to take advantage, trying to fix that. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of benefits to it.
I just wanted to say something about the housing, I'm not the, the historical aspects of this, the houses that are on the property. Number of people have made, uh, you know, have emphasized the fact that the State Office of Housing Preservation has found adverse impacts as a result of the potential, you know, the, of his, this project going forward. But those adverse impacts don't translate to adverse impacts under the purview of this board through the SEACRA analysis, okay? We, as a board, would have to decide that there are adverse impacts that can't be mitigated or that, that we have to then find are important enough, which would cause us to either reject the project or demand changes. And we're not there yet because we're still getting the information that we need in order to do that. We still are getting the verification of the historical analysis of this property. So it's not that we have made decisions to avoid an environmental impact statement and issue a positive declaration or not. We got at that point yet.
Right.
Still in the fact gathering stages, notwithstanding the fact that we've had a lot of information already and we've had at least two hearings on this matter. So we're, we're still going forward and our options are all open.
I've gotta, I kinda put my thoughts down only because of my architectural background. We seem to be struggling with what to do with that main building architecturally. And thankfully, the applicant is considering keeping that building, which he's not obligated to do at this point or as part of his proposal. But he has proposed that. And people keep talking about restoring that building. And I know that architecturally, you couldn't restore that building because nobody can tell me when that building, what the period is that, that you would restore to. There is vinyl on that building. There is plywood in that building. There are, there are current building materials that we use every day that are in that building. And so somebody would have to make selections as to what comes out of that building, what goes back into the building. There's four over four windows, six over six windows, a single glazed, double glazed, vinyl windows. What's, what's the mark that you're going to write on that paper that's a passing grade for the design of that building? It's impossible. So I, I put down my thoughts because I was struggling with it myself. It was like, what, what's the answer? And, uh, what I've come up with, I said, it appears that the majority of the public input to date is focused on the procedural aspect of this project. The format of hearings, the detail of the paperwork, the credentials of the consultants, the endless critiques of the process by the public seems to dominate the Planning Board's review of the project. I visited our town museum and nowhere have I found a display of old Planning Board minutes or anything relating to process. It's always the result, what do we end up looking at and what do we end up living with? Buildings are, are used and, and the ones that remain are in many cases because of the, the value that they have to us, either design-wise or functionally. The historical aspect of Underhill Farms needs definition that will help guide the applicant towards responding to the Planning Board's goal that will include input from the public. We've gotta narrow this down to be able to tell the applicant what it is we want. Cause right now, none of us can define that, including me. The idea of targeting a date specific to use as design style is problematic in that the main building has been modified several times over a long period of time. The suggestion that we use the original construction period as a reference is also problematic. Are we to apply the standards that a chosen period, of a chosen period to water supply, plumbing, building methods, building products, paving, landscape practices, HVAC, security, fire alarms? It'd be impossible. We could never get a building permit issued by this town for a project that's going to be a restoration. So I've basically tried to compare this to what you would do with an automobile restoration. There's something in the automobile restoration world called a RestoMod, which is basically to take an older vehicle, make it look authentic to the period of time, what, say a 55 Chevy? But you've gotta put brakes on it that are...
ABS.
Real brakes. You gotta put in real tires, not radio, you, you put in radial tires, not the old tires. So you're basically upgrading the functionality of, of a car, but it still has the, has the appearance of a 55 or a 43 or whatever the car is. And that's what I think we're gonna have to come up with here. We're gonna have to make that building functionally, uh, address the building codes that we're dealing with today because whatever we decide, if you can't get a building permit, what's the point? And nobody is going to restore that building to the authentic because the use is never gonna, you're never, this is not gonna be Williamsburg. So just, that was my thought, is that we work towards coming up with a definition of what the RestoMod version of that building would be in its current condition, where it's going to end up, and what the use will be, and how that will look. And it's not gonna be period specific, it can't, it can't be because there is many periods that that building reflects. So it still doesn't answer the question specifically, but I think it gives us some clarity in terms of thinking about where we go with this, in terms of telling the applicant what this town is looking for, that we would like to see that building represent.
And then it also affects the cost of the rehab.
Exactly. Yeah, because as Michael Grace has said about his own building, I mean, replace the front, front...
Yes.
Decking on that building, if you're gonna do it in authentic materials, it could cost you a fortune. And, and at some point, somebody's, oh, and he's here. So, yeah, I did remember what you said once. But, but what I'm saying is that at some point, the cost is going to outweigh the value of doing it and he's gonna say, you know what, I'm just not doing it.
And I think what you said in the beginning, and John, unless we're incorrect, and I, I read in the paper again how, you know, Yorktown is losing another gem, another historic building. Not this one, but another, I think, on the city property. If a property is sold and it's got a historic structure on it, the new owner can come in there, if it's not landmarked, and knock it down. They can get a, a building permit, a demo permit and take it down. They did nothing. So I, and I said this at one of the earlier meetings, this is an opportunity where they're looking to save it. And just, as you said, how do you do that most appropriately?
Right.
But I think part of what we're hearing out there is this is, you know, the destruction of a historically significant building, and I think that's just not the case.
I agree.
And, you know, everything I hear and read, especially in the paper...
Yeah, of course.
Is that of, you know, the board isn't taking the proper approach, you know, which they're gonna take shots at us, it's gonna happen, this is, you know. But I just think the real accurate record has to get out there.
I, I also think, just, just to finish the thought of what I went through, is that whatever that vocabulary of materials and, and design and textures and everything else, colors and so forth of that building, should relate to the new buildings that they're gonna be putting up so that that carries over onto those. I don't wanna see an older-looking period building, whatever form this takes, surrounded by contemporary buildings. I, I think this all should work together so that it looks like it was thought through and not just two different styles put down together. And, uh, so there should be variation. You could take a floor plan and execute it with different roof lines, different roof materials, different details, different window designs, and have the same floor plan look five different ways.
It's right down the street here.
Exactly.
Right? You can see it in those newer buildings.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Jim, you've been...
No, I, I think it's important that the public know that this is not a case where the applicant is submitting information and the board is accepting it at face value and nodding their head and the process moves along. I mean, Councilman Esposito explained what's being done, which is in effect gonna be vetting the information submitted by the applicant on the historic resources and the information submitted by the public. The, no decision will be made until the planning board has an unbiased third-party look at the information. And if the neighbors, the, the residents are correct, then the project will have to be revised accordingly. If the applicant is correct, then the applicant can move forward. The same will be true about traffic. And as much credibility as, uh, you know, Mr. Greeley has, you cannot put a traffic consultant on the honor system, and it's not being done here. Their traffic study will be vetted by people who are qualified to vet it, not by somebody who drives a car and that's their experience in traffic engineering, but somebody who actually has studied it, has degrees in it, and knows how to make complicated situations work. Anybody who drives this intersection out here knows it's not perfect. And it can be fixed, the question is how best to do it and how to make it work, just like this last application. You take a piece of property and you say, okay, we'll have, make a plan for it now. And it may be years before that plan comes to do, to fruition. But if you fix the intersection now, it may be years before the benefits are fully realized. But you have an opportunity now to do something that has, pays off dividends. But the most important point is that nothing is being taken at face value. Everything is being vetted. And no decisions will be made until all the issues are fully vetted. And if the applicant has to do an environmental impact statement at a later point in the process, then so be it. That's the risk the applicant has to take.
Have you got anything they wanna add?
No, well, I... I think the public has to be aware that we're gonna be considering their comments as well for the truth and the, and the, and the background of what they're proposing or saying. I mean, I read an article where it was said that the building is gonna be torn down. I've never heard that from anybody else but in that article.
Yeah, but they, they make up stories, you, you know.
Well, then we're gonna consider that it's made up, that's what, that's at least what I'm gonna be doing.
And I think that's important, you know, during the public here or the information, we, we let everybody speak. There was no time limit.
Right.
And yet, in the paper, we were muzzling people.
Right.
So...
And also, also, the secret process allows us two different options to choose from. And it's stated that if we're considering one, we're not following SEACRA. But if we take the other one, we are, which is not the case, so...
The other thing I wanted to bring up is that this project will bring us the senior citizens' building that is absolutely needed here. When this project goes through, we'll get parking so we can build the senior citizen, uh, uh, what were they talking about, another building? Am I right?
For Beaver Ridge.
Yeah, it's a wrecked building.
It's a wrecked building, but it's, it's adjacent to this property.
Correct.
And, and, and we'll use, they, they will utilize some parking on, on this property.
Right.
It's a win. I mean, come on.
No, I think, everything's gotta be considered, but what I'm saying is when somebody makes a statement, it has to be an accurate statement for me to consider it as part of adjusting my thinking on this. If they're just gonna make a statement saying, well, it's in the record, well, then what's the value of the record?
Everybody's making a statement, it's gotta, uh...
It's gotta be, it's gotta be based on fact.
And you had a lot of legitimate...
They have an agenda.
Oh, absolutely.
They have an agenda.
There was some really very good questions.
Absolutely.
And points raised.
You know, the traffic study is gonna be done by a traffic consultant and there is, there's levels of, of service for intersections and geometry and so forth that is just not refutable by, by anybody sitting on this board that I can know of, that, that a traffic consultant knows, that the geometry and the site distance and everything else, timing of lights and everything is, is a science.
It's math.
Yeah.
Do we have an anticipated timeline on the RFP and the selection and then the follow-on study? I mean, is this a four-month, eight-month, you know, what, do they, have they given a sense of how much time will be needed?
No, I, I don't know what the, um, the, the RFP's gonna go out. It, it looks like we're, we're getting set for it for tomorrow. And then what's gonna end up happening is, uh, it'll have, it'll have a date for, for people to respond to it. The date's not gonna be four months from now, I don't, I don't think it's that...
I'm, I'm just saying overall, so once a selection is made, is there a sense of whether the applicants need 90 days or, you know, to do the study, to do their, their work?
I think once the selection is made, I think we'll, I, I think we're gonna probably hand it back to you guys.
Well, how long is it gonna take?
Well, let's, let's just clarify something. This is for an on-call historic consultant, so it's not just an RFP for this particular project.
Okay.
So what'll happen is once, once we get the proposals and we select somebody, they will actually look at this project and give a proposal for how much and will tell us how long it will take them to do their work. But they'll also be available from then on throughout the process for things that come up and as the project evolves, if it does, so...
Okay.
Yeah, we still, I think we're waiting, we haven't heard back. And I know they were working on the questions we gave them, so it's just, right now it's a limbo.
The applicant?
Yeah.
Yeah, the applicant is working, they're drafting up their things that you have asked them to take a harder look at.
So do we need to do anything to give whoever is selected at the end of this RFP process? Is there anything we should be doing to hand to the people that are selected to do the study? Or do they, we pretty much have everything already down as to what we wanna see, what we wanna take into consideration?
Yes, so relative to this particular project...
This project, correct.
That will come after probably selection.
Okay.
Uh, I think possibly during interviews, there may be some description of, of this project, you know, to, to sort of draw out how would they approach it? What do they think they would, might need, how long something would take their office to do that?
Right.
That'll, that'll tell you, you know, a lot about the contractors, uh, consultants. But once, once there's one selected, then we'll, you know, heap upon them all the information that we have, which will be significant for them to actually, you know, figure out what it's gonna cost and how long it will take for them to get back to you.
And last time the board did invite me to attend those interviews, so I mean, it followed, you know, a very detailed process. I give you guys a lot of credit for giving us those consultants to assist us as we work forward.
Well, we wanna make sure everything's on the up and up, and we wanna make sure we have information, uh, again, that's unbiased.
Right, I think we all agree.
Not saying that anybody's information out there is biased, but we're going to hire our own consultant and, and that's the pedal going down.
Right. All right. Anything to add to that?
No.
Counselor?
Nothing else from me.
John?
Nothing.
Always, thank you, John, Robin and Nancy. You know we like to give you a hard time, Nancy. All right. Next on the agenda is LMDS Realty. This is a pre-preliminary application.
Pre-preliminary.
Yep. 3735 Crampon Road, Route 202.
This is New Duncan Donus.
Yes. Where the old choppers used to be. It used to be a biker bar. Choppers.
Is that what this is? This is what, uh, what was it called?
Choppers.
Choppers, yeah.
That's right.
Choppers.
Choppers, choppers, yes. Next to the windmill.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And it's got a lot right next door.
Oh, okay, building is gone.
How are ya?
It's been empty for thirty years, man.
Yeah?
Well, come on, I, when I moved up here...
Well, they're, um, um, Lesley's.
Next to the windmill. The guy was gonna restore that windmill and do a...
That's the penny, right?
That's still... They put a caveat on it that whoever takes that property has to restore the windmill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody's gonna restore that.
No? Because there was an application, yeah.
Well, again, they're not, they're not gonna restore it. They're just gonna renovate it to look like it was. It's gonna be a facade.
It's gonna be plastic.
Right. But this is just a vacant piece of property right now, next to the...
This is near Nestle.
There was a bar there.
Yeah. Right between Nestle's.
Actually, is it next to the windmill or is it next to the Shell station?
I don't know. The new property.
Sorry, I had this all queued up just a minute ago.
Yeah, it's right here. Here's, here's the windmill, this is the property, here's Nestle.
Oh, and there's the Shell, okay.
Yeah, and here's the lawnmower.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've got a question about Taco Bell. They got a sign facing Old Crampon. It's the only business on Old Crampon that has a sign facing the residential area. I don't know how it baka...
I remember that.
The road that runs behind.
Yeah, yeah, that's my citon, that was back then. Yeah.
That could be an issue. Sorry, I'm having some technical issues. Do you have the hard copy map?
We have maps.
Yeah, we have it on our computer.
We have one here.
See?
Oh, there we go.
Yeah. Old school wins the day.
No, no, no. There it is.
There, Robin.
That's it, thank you. Ruben Buck, uh, from Engineering and Surveying Properties, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Just do wanna make a correction, the applicant is SDML Realty LLC. And I was, uh, a misprint on our behalf and we'll correct it on the plan. Joined by Paul Sardania, he's, uh, from SD, yep, from SDML Realty LLC. We're here before you to discuss a new Duncan establishment. We're happy to hear that the Wendy's, uh, site is moving forward because obviously these, these two projects are working somewhat hand-in-hand. Duncan is gonna relocate to this, uh, site along Crampon Road. And there are currently four existing parcels, they're all gonna be combined as part of this application to facilitate the construction of this facility. Once combined, uh, there's gonna be a new, uh, drive-through Duncan post. On the west side of the site, there's gonna be a full-service entrance for incoming and outgoing vehicles. And on the eastern side of the site, we're proposing right-turn only. We prepared two sketch plans that you, uh, were part of our submission. First sketch plan, which, uh, that's the second sketch plan up on the board now, showing angled parking on both the, there. First sketch plan showing 90-degree parking on the west side of the site and angular parking on the drive-through side. And then the second sketch plan is very similar to, uh, the one shown, uh, here. However, it's showing angled parking on the western and eastern portions of the site. So we're just here to make our initial presentation to the board, get any comments on our layouts, if there is one that the board would prefer us move forward with, and discussion of zoning compliance and next steps.
What's the, are, are the angled site parking spaces safer or better for the customers of the, of the store than the straight-out, you know, the 90-degree ones?
So on the western side, it's, it, the aisle in between the parking can be narrower with angled parking. You don't need as much, as much room to back out.
Mm-hmm.
On the drive-through side, the angled parking lends itself for ease of backing out of those parking spaces. If you have 90-degree parking with a drive-through behind it, it becomes difficult for vehicles to navigate. So with the angle, it's easier for them to pull in, pull out and not interfere with the drive-through lane.
And the traffic flow is one-way?
Yes.
So I mean, that promotes kind of people backing out.
The angle is one-way.
No, no, the traffic flow is one-way. So if you had 90-degree, you had 90-degree parking on the left side, somebody could back out and then go against the flow of traffic. That, that would be a risk.
That looks, that one, I mean, just from, uh, looks better.
Yeah.
You're asking us to suggest which way you should proceed and... Yeah, the 90-degree parking's got two-way traffic on that west...
On the western side.
Yeah, so that's your point there, so...
I like the idea that the, the one on the eastern side forces traffic to make a right on 202 rather than try to cross both lanes.
Yeah. Yeah. Did we determine at one point that all the businesses along 202, people can make a left turn out onto 202? There's no restriction? Because that was an issue with Taco Bell. We were trying to force the traffic to the right.
I think it's a DOT, so there's no openings there now, right?
There is, there's a curb island right in the middle. We were proposing to widen that curb island. There's an existing curb island there and we tried to keep our proposed curb cuts generally where the existing ones are, and...
Are they truly existing or are they...
They're...
When you go to the DOT, are they gonna consider that pre-existing or they're gonna make your...
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what the use is beforehand, and if this is gonna be a more intensive use.
Well, they're saying it was a bar, right?
Yes, it was a bar.
How many, how many eastbound lanes are there on 202 in front of this premises? Is there, is this where there are two or just one?
This, it narrows down to just one in front of this premises.
Okay.
Can I ask a procedural question? Because there's four lots. I recall in a different municipality, a suit that came forth where a subdivision was required to combine those lots into one. Is that the case here? Would that be?
No.
Commercial mill, I don't think so.
Subdivision is the division of a lot into one or more lots. It's not the combination of lots... Subdivision is the division of a lot into one or more lots, it's not the combination of lots, multiple lots into one.
Well, and I just know in Greenberg, there was a case and.
Why did I know it was gonna be?
And it, it held.
But they may have had something in their local regulation.
It might, I just, I don't recall, it was a long time ago, but I remember they won the case.
No, I don't.
And we, we did not, okay, sorry. Take on Greenberg.
But, but part of this application could be a requirement to combine the lots.
Yeah.
But as far as what you're asking us tonight, I think the feeling is that the, the angled parking on the west side is probably the way to continue. Is that what we're saying?
The, the number of parking spaces, is that what's required by code?
That, that's something we wanted to discuss as well.
Does that look like a, that looks like a tremendous amount of parking for?
And I would, I would also like to know, our initial application was proposing a slightly smaller building, it was twenty-nine hundred square feet. Uh, the applicant is gonna go forward and use a, a three thousand square foot building, so the, the parking's gonna increase slightly more than what's shown, and.
Due to the formula, you're saying the parking would have to increase?
Yes, correct.
Now, is there a different parking count in one plan to the other?
No, it's the same, it's the same.
You need to send us the architectural floor plan so we can go through that with you.
What's the seating capacity?
Let me spot that.
Let's say if it's not drive-through traffic, it's people coming in to have coff- uh, sit down and have coffee.
Twenty-eight seats. And there's forty-one spaces.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the question that I was gonna come up with next, you have a lot of parking.
That's a lot, that just. I know, it's compliant.
Is that compliance with the code?
Yeah.
Wow, that's what we said.
Well, I don't have a breakdown of the, of the prep or the patronary. In the restaurants, we need the, we need the plan of the building.
The, the breakdown we used for the plan, we, we have a preliminary footprint that's used on, on several other sites that have been constructed. Included in the prep area was the, um, behind the counter area, as well as the walk-in freezer, cool area. And then patron was just the remainder portion of the building. We, we can provide floor plans, so we can work together and figure out what's gonna be, uh, appropriate. But in, in terms of the parking, uh, it's anticipated that there's gonna be eight employees working at this location. And, uh, we would like to, uh, potentially discuss land banking, the parking on the drive-through side. One, because it, it seems like a lot of parking, and we, we showed it on the sketch plan to show that we could comply with the zoning code. However, we believe it would be, um, beneficial to preserve, uh, the pervious areas on the site. And also beneficial to the flow of traffic if we can land bank that parking and utilize the parking in the west side. Uh, in keeping all, you know, people coming into the restaurant, eh, on the western side, and people using the drive-through, moving around the building. And using the eastern side of the building just for the drive-through, rather than parking on that, on that side as well.
You anticipating any outdoor seating?
No. No.
Got a big walk-in line.
I will just forewarn you, uh, we had an application next door, the Nestle application. And the residents in this area will be out, uh, they'll come out hard, um, so just out of the gate. You know, lighting, noise, uh, screening, hours of operation.
Right.
You know, the Nestle next door is a, is a late night operation. And, uh, as much as we tried to address lighting issues, there's been complaints, uh, going on for some time. I don't know if that's ever been resolved, but.
Three residencies right behind it.
Yeah, it was ongoing, and you're, these residents are really right there, um, so just, you know, get ready, cause they're coming out. I don't know, I just, you got the dual order window, right? So that amount of parking just seems.
Seems like a lot for the size of the building.
It really does.
Most of our business goes through the drive-through.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I was just commenting, uh, with John, I'm like, you know, people don't typically go into Dunkin' Donuts sitting out, sitting down and have a meal, you know? Uh, it's typically drive-through, or you run in, grab your drinks, and you're out. Did you guys bring any drinks anyway, like a medium?
Next time.
Latte, I'll have a latte with some.
Please go quick.
Bring some for the public area.
Is there anything on the western portion of the site that precludes your plan from going there, or is it just that it became surplus?
So we had the fifty-foot side yard setback from the residential district.
Okay.
So we kept everything over on the, the eastern side and, and.
Yeah.
The eastern portion of the lot is longer, so it gave us the ability to have, well, to meet the parking requirement, one. And to have more room to have the, the dual, the dual drive-through lanes and line up the site with the existing, uh, curb cuts along Crampon.
What, what is the painted gore in the back for?
That's for loading.
Deliveries.
Is there any way to change that so you're not so close to the residents behind you?
If we're able to reduce the number of parking spaces, it's possible we can push the development closer to, uh, Crampon and away from the residents. Or potentially move the loading, if we don't need parking on the eastern side, move the loading over to the eastern side and utilize that space for loading. And, and eliminate it in the rear altogether.
What's the setback off of Old Crampon with traffic crossing in front of your building? In other words, continuing the loop and going, going, coming off the west side, going back and turning west. Don't you have a certain amount of setback that you need off the road?
So we've got a fifteen-foot front yard setback to the building, I'm, I'm not sure of any setback to the, the through lane. Going back to the western, uh, dual access.
That seems to be a staple now, the, the dual drive-through in the front.
Yeah.
It was, everyone that we see now is doing the same thing.
I'm also wondering about fire equipment making that turn. They can come in and go out anywhere they want.
Yeah.
They want.
It almost looks like if you turned it a little bit.
So you're, you're talking about the, the front lane in front of the building being parallel?
Correct.
Okay.
You're concerned about an emergency vehicle making the left up around one o'clock on the drawing? Well, you, you're saying, cause they couldn't go out the other entrance and make a left?
Well, they could go in or out.
Wherever they want.
John, what's the process looking at the parking? If we wanted to, to consider the, the land banking?
Well, the, the process is, you know, going through your normal.
I mean, is, do we, are there, I don't know, with Dunkin' Donuts?
Well, I, I think what would should happen here, first of all, we're gonna need to get the floor plan.
Yeah.
And then I think possibly you get some evaluation through the ITE, which does have this type of use.
Yeah.
Uh, not only in traffic, um, generation, but parking requirements. Uh, but also we can look at, and I'm sure that you can get some information from your colleagues that also have Dunkin' Donuts in the area. And see what they're, what typically they're doing on, you know, their, their peak periods in terms of what their need for parking is. And then you can make an actual determination per this u- exact use is what is needed there. To balance some of the things on the site, you know, namely the impact on the neighbors, wetlands, other environmental impacts, et cetera.
This is gonna take, there's gonna be some back and forth, I really think it would be very, uh, advantageous to go and sit with John. And I know the town engineer was here before, he ran out again.
What are the hours of operation?
The fog.
Anticipated?
The town will allow, but typically right now we're five AM to ten PM.
So it's not a twenty-four hour operation?
How, how much cooking or food preparation will you be doing on site?
It's all microwave.
Freezer to oven thawing, uh, nothing that requires making dough or anything like that. Donuts are delivered and, um, bagels of freezer to thaw, top it.
Okay.
I think we just need to come up with some different variations here, looking at the parking.
Yeah.
Seeing how we could, and, and especially with that back and that loading zone.
Yeah.
You know, the further we keep that away, where's the dumpster, is that that back corner?
This, lower, lower right corner.
I, I think that's something you should look at again, too, you know, maybe there's a way to, you know, looking at from garbage truck pickup. Maybe there's something you could put closer to the front.
So the queuing and stacking that you're showing is the desired amount of line that you wanna have to. Process the customers that you expect, right?
Correct.
So they don't turn away and go elsewhere, right?
You said the store got larger from the original?
Yes, our initial application had twenty-nine hundred square feet, uh, square foot footprint, and we're gonna end up using a three thousand. Three thousand sixty-nine square foot.
Alright, so it's not that one.
Minor, minor change.
This will be Dunkin' Donuts, right? N- no other sister, uh.
No Baskin Robbins or?
No Chick-fil-A.
What?
No Chick-fil-A.
Hurtful.
I know, I know.
Listen, I, I took pictures and sent it to my daughters over the weekend, cause Dunkin' Donuts, you know, Wendy's got rid of it, what's, where's Dunkin' gonna go?
Dunkin's gonna go.
Couple of people I spoke to were glad that this application was being put into the neighborhood.
Oh, listen, people are excited to see Dunkin' Donut.
Yeah.
I just don't know that you need that much parking.
It's not Dunkin' Donuts name, it's Dunkin'.
Do we have flexibility on parking?
Well, I think John's gonna dig into the weeds on it, but.
So we'll see, okay.
And I think you really, you know, if you could look at, does it help to spin it so the buildings, you know, square to the, to the state road? You know, obviously the state's gonna look at this, and I don't know what kind of environmental constraints there might be out there.
Our initial screening didn't identify any, uh, uh, too, too restricting constraints on the site. Uh, to the north, there is a flood plain, hundred-year flood plain along the form of the site. There are wetlands to the western side, there's a culvert that comes underneath, uh, Crampon Road, uh, all the wetlands are off-site. So from a environmental standpoint, it's, it's a pretty decent parcel to work with.
So you evaluated the wetlands under the local regulation that we have?
We had a, a wetland biologist go out and delineate the wetlands, and, and that's what's shown in the plan, uh, if there are.
But did he do it from the DEC, uh, regulations or the local regulations? Do you know?
They, they go out and determine whether or not it, it needs to be looked at by the DEC.
Well, our, our regulation may be a little bit more strict.
Okay.
So something that doesn't necessarily rise to a DEC wetland could be a local wetland, so.
Okay.
We just have to work through that, my recollection is that there's other wetlands on this site, I may be wrong, but we just have to make sure of that.
Sure, we'll, we'll look into the regulations to make sure we're in good shape.
And we have an environmental consultant that will verify the, at, when you're finished and you're confident that you've captured everything that you need. They will go out and verify those flagging and, or places you haven't flagged, let's say.
And again, I just urge you, really start to look at how you could screen from.
Yeah, I was gonna say, one, you bring up an excellent point, Richard, because the loading zone is just in the backyard of the residence.
Be noisy.
Dumpster is in the backyard.
Yeah, they're not.
So we, i- if something can be done with the parking, or if that land on the west side can be utilized for some of those. You know, yeah, I don't know where a dumpster could go over there, but away from the residence, that might be an improvement.
Yeah, it, uh.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think the loading zone, while you may locate it there, I don't think practically anybody that's doing the delivery's going to load, unload from there. I just don't see it. Uh, I, I think you probably will get tractor-trailer, uh, deliveries, is that right? Cause I see them all the time, what's the timeframe that you get those?
Twice a week.
Twice a week, but in, in what times of, of the day?
It could be at seven AM, it could be at two PM.
Okay, so it's all different times, okay, you just have to find a reasonable spot.
Yeah, they're gonna pull right out in front of them on the state road and.
Yeah.
Take everything out.
They do not.
I see it all the time.
All, all, a lot, everybody, it's not really.
Where do they, where do they load you now, right behind the building, right? And they take up some parking spaces and, right, there's just no good spot for it.
With the drive-through and.
Yeah.
What is the area behind the, behind the building?
Open green space.
It's gonna be green space, so you could theoretically look at the possibility of delivery being right behind the building. As a pass-through just for the, for the use when the delivery is made.
Potentially.
Okay.
It would be further away from the residential area, so it's something to at least take a look at.
If I, if I recall, this land is below, right, isn't there a grade that goes up to the?
Absolutely.
So those residences will be looking over the top of it.
Right. Are you the owner of the existing Dunkin'?
Frank Chazie, correct.
Okay.
You'd have got, got kicked out?
My lease was coming up and I saw an opportunity to buy.
Oh, oh, I mean, saying, but you were, you were in the, in the.
I was in the Dunkin'.
In the old space, yeah.
Well, that's the big que- everyone was asking.
Yeah, what happened?
How did this happen?
Right. They're gonna drive us out of town.
We were ready to make an upwizing and go.
This question came up in my neighborhood and they were glad to hear that you were looking just down the road.
Well, I'm a tenant where I am, this would be a purchase.
Yours.
Okay. That's the answer, that explains.
Okay, alright, so I think you really gotta be sensitive, cause they're gonna, you know, anything you could do to tweak that. I, I honestly would work with John and Robin, see how you could, you know, make that site possibly work a little bit better.
How's, how's the McDonald's laid out there, is it?
It's identical to this.
Yeah, it's almost like the same thing, but, but isn't the dumpster?
Burger King here is the same thing.
Yeah, but Do- Mc- McDonald's is right out on Old Crampon, there's houses behind this break.
Sergio, this is, N- Nestle's right here, and you know, when they pick up the water?
Yeah.
It's a night operation, and we did, I think, everything that we thought we were doing it right at the time with the noise and with the lights. And those, I think, were they, they were coming after us for a little bit, I don't know if it's died down, but they were really upset about that project.
Well, they adjusted the lights, they did some work on that.
They did, I know, I think.
Definitely go buy this up.
Rena was their architect, or their engineer.
They're still having issues.
They are.
Yeah.
Well, they're, they're, that's an industry.
Oh, yeah.
Trucks coming, tractor-trailers coming in twenty-four seven, they're, they're loading their trucks all night long.
Do we ever determine who's that right-of-way belongs to, is that town or is that paper?
This one right next door?
The one between the two.
It's the town.
Behind Nestle's.
Yep.
Okay, that's it.
Alright.
Alright.
I get it. We'll, we'll look into the, uh, IT and, and figure out, uh, a nu- a number for parking that's more consistent with what the use is gonna be.
Yeah, well, well, let's start with the floor plan and then we'll move.
Would you like to see the elevations that we're proposing?
Sure. Limiter, that's good.
I still don't know if I have control up there, I'll, I'll walk over with it, if I may.
It's a nice seal, that's gonna go on the building?
It's a new donut.
There you go.
Oh, it's a nice looking building.
Yeah.
Okay.
So which side is towards the, the front, is it angled?
The upper left.
That's towards the.
Front.
So the side with the signage is angled towards the.
The drive-through side.
Yeah.
And that's the eastern side of the building.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's a nice looking building.
We're glad to hear you stand in Yorktown.
Thank you for that, thank you for having me.
That place saved me when I had young kids.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't have to get out of the car.
Yes.
Well, thank you all very much, we'll, we'll be back with revised.
Work with Robin and, and John, please.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Dan.
What else we got?
Before you guys take off, I just wanted to make sure that they do the local wetlands delineation, because the local, you know, the county GIS calls it out. As hydric soils, so make sure your soil scientist evaluates that, cause the whole, it shows the whole area down by the road is, is hydric soils.
This is Nancy RC, he's the town engineer, he's the one that disappeared before, and now he's reappeared. Alright, my God, alright, eight was taken off, uh, they, they pulled the application themselves. And number nine, Lowe's Pad C, this is a discussion of a site plan, three one eight zero Crampon Road. Uh, Site Design Consultants.
They're not gonna go ahead with that, uh, contractor registry?
They, they withdrew that from the agenda.
Yeah, I know, but I hope they're not abandoning it.
No, no, I think they, they didn't get town bill referral yet, that's why I'm, yeah. So they were just jumping on it. Everybody's screaming about it.
Good question. Yeah, I didn't think they abandoned the project.
No, no, they just, they're getting it.
Off our agenda.
Tomorrow night.
Okay. Anybody prefer paper or you just like?
I like paper. I'm the only one.
Tom, what's it? And Bob, you're right. You know, you know, it's interesting that the house over there is the same, the front porch of that house is the same thing in terms of the woodwork as my building. You go to the molding, it's just done on a grander scale.
Right.
So you, you, your restomod analogy is a good one, because that's exactly what we had to do.
You had to.
We wired the whole thing, but kept the, and I'm gonna tell you, you know, what, when I think, I just, I don't have to sense, it's a very expensive proposition. And if you want, if, if the idea is preserving it, you gotta give some compensation back.
Otherwise, somebody's gonna destroy it.
Right, and it's, and it's, and it's, and you're right, it's a mismatch. The older part of the building's seventeen-hundreds, the later part's late eighteen-hundreds, which is really the pinnacle of American architecture.
And then you got probably nineteen-eighty vinyl windows and?
Yeah, well, that's fine. We, we, we did the same, we, we ended up, I had windows that were hanging, we, we ended up going through a very expensive process of, of getting wood, wood-sash windows to, you know, mimic what was there originally.
I remember you were also with the, with the front that, with the front porch that you.
Oh, forget it, I, I, I almost, I almost did a dumpster dive when I took all the wood out and found out what it was costing to replace, I said, oh, bring that dumpster back, I'll, I'll de-nail it.
That's right.
I wasn't too long ago either.
Yeah, anyhow, good to see you all.
Same here.
How's everybody? Good, I hope. Alright, this, this is a Pad C, so this is the last pad on the development there. And, uh, it's, it's going to be a twenty-nine-hundred square foot, uh, restaurant. Twenty-four, sorry, twenty-four hundred. Uh, basically, um, you have the skill and the expertise of Joe Rena, so not really, not much to be discussed.
Does this comply with all the regulations that?
Makes all, makes, yeah, meets all, meets all the regs. Uh, the, the, there's one, one, um, one, one issue, I suppose, is that they're looking for their own monument sign. And that's, um,
located.
And there it is. Um, and, and John, you may be able to help me with this, I, I know there's a master sign plan, and I, I don't know whether that was a part of the original approval for the whole site, or that's coming out of the, the regs, but, and, and I guess this is an ongoing.
Yeah, I don't think in the master, my recollection is the master sign plan for this property didn't, has not yet anticipated a new monument sign in this location, so.
Right, and I don't, I, 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 my question really is, it's whether it's the sign ordinance or actually the approval for the, the other p- other parcels in here where that was generated from. Because this now becomes a standalone lot, which may, you know, but we don't want to offend anything that went beforehand as far as that's concerned, and we'd like to work with it. I think that, um, from the point of view of how the site works, and it, it, uh, in terms of visualization of what's on the site, the sign that's there, I think this actually works very well, and it's something that should be seriously considered, because I think that, uh, you know, the problem with these, these multiple tenant signs, um, they, they have their own issues, and I think this, uh, you know, ground-mounted monument sign is something that may aesthetically really add to the site rather than detract from it, and we would actually seriously, I, I seriously consider it, I think that it, it, as a standalone lot, may be disallowable by code, but I don't want to offend what may have gone beforehand, and I haven't fully researched whether the master sign plan also encompassed this lot as well.
So. Michael, I may have missed the beginning, is that sign intended to be on two oh two or down on the entrance?
It's, it's, yeah, further.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, and, and, uh, there, there was some discussion as to where the best location for it was, and, you know, uh, there was some discussion of putting it further to the east, but that didn't make a lot of, make a lot of sense, that would be almost towards the, the exit ramp of the, of the deconic there, which would, wouldn't have much utility anymore, because all that traffic coming, traveling west would pass it before they saw it, and coming, the line of sight going, um, east, uh, it's, it would be a better location. And I think, but, one of the things we, you know, we always had to consider with these signs is trying to create less confusion to those people, for the traveling public, as to what they're going, and, you know, you go down to Staples Plaza, quite frankly, you know, you, you have to slow down to get to what the list, list of, you know, they're ineffective at a, a certain point, the directory signs just be completely ineffective, and somewhat dangerous in, in certain situations. So we think this is actually a, a much better, um, uh, alternative. And I think it's, it's actually something that, you know, if it works well here, and I think it will, it's something for the town to consider in the future, rather than doing what they do with these big directory signs, which just, you know, so that's, I think.
But you'll have other building signage, right?
The, we, we keep retaining the, you know, the directory sign that's there now, leaving it all alone, but on the, on the building itself, I guess there will be some, yes.
So, so I think, I think evaluating the building signage and how that works, in identifying who and what it is relative to the traveling public, I think that'll inform how and where, and to what extent the monument sign is valuable.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I mean, I think monument signs can be attractive, absolutely, they can actually be an enhancement, I think. But, you know, if you're talking about visual pollution and so forth, if you have Chipotle up here and Chipotle here, maybe you're not doing yourself any good. So, I mean, I think once the building signage comes clearer, you can probably make a better evaluation of that.
I, I, I don't, I, I don't disagree. I think it's just really coming from the east, that, that, that Pad C is kind of tucked.
It's under, right.
Tucked in, so, that you may want it, because if somebody's saying, oh, we gotta go to the Chipotle there, you know, where is it, and then it comes up on you too. Uh, but John, absolutely, I, I, all I'm doing is bringing it up, because, uh, you know, as far as compliance with the master sign and the zoning code, there may be issues there, so I just want to point out that, that, other than that, everything else is, you know, fully compliant, and.
Can I ask two questions? So, I, I see you got digital pickup. I'm not, that's not, that sounds different than a window.
It's a Chipotle, and so basically what you're doing is you're ordering your meal.
Oh, I'm sorry, Oz is gonna yell at you from behind the screen.
So essentially, it's a Chipotle, which Justin Breslin, Breslin Realty. It's a Chipotle, which means that on the app, you order your meal, and you're basically picking up from the phone versus a microphone and a window.
That's crazy. I gotta tell you, you guys have done such a nice job with the, the Trader Joe's and, and the way it opened, and I think the traffic control working with the town, that's a, a great, uh, development there.
Thank you so much.
Great, too.
Appreciate that.
It's very nice.
Bob Rosenberg from my office is really the one that's in charge of that, so, thank you guys.
How are you?
Yeah, we're, we're tired of him.
And that's, that's the only, you know, we, it was always, everybody was holding their breath when Trader Joe's opened up, and it's all gone very smoothly.
But the second question is, the, the two handicap spots, the location of them, you have them now, and I'm, I, I just think there's probably a better place to put them than there, having someone who potentially is in a wheelchair cross the parking lot and in front of that window pickup.
Right, well, that's not a pickup window pickup spot.
Right, but that's, you're directing.
Hello, everybody.
What's that?
Hi, Joe.
Hi, Joe.
Sorry.
But that's, that's where the front entrance is, is right on that corner of the building there, and there's, that's where the patio is.
Yeah.
So there's really no other place we can go that's close, closer, or we can meet, meet the grade requirement, because we can't have more than two percent in the parking spaces to get us to that front entrance.
So what are the two doors to the, moving towards the into, interior of the site?
So, um, that, the bump out on, on the south, on the northeast corner, northwest corner there, uh, that is a utility room.
Okay.
Okay, and on the other side is the pickup window.
The other side?
Upside.
That's the drive-through window.
Right.
And does it, and does that also qualify as the digital pickup?
That's all it is.
That's all it is, so there's not, there's no menu board which you order? It, this is, okay, thank you.
You order it on your phone.
Got it.
You go there with your number.
Never been to a Chipotle thing, I got it, got it now. So that's, is, that's a handicap, handicap ramp in the, in the rear there?
The only issue I have is.
This here, Joe?
Yes.
Eight chair, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Over here, it can't be over here, I don't know what the grade is.
Very, it's a little, I mean, the, it's a parking lot, like a temporary parking lot now?
This.
You gotta go by.
Just, I need to explain something here, and that is our loading situation. So, to get a tractor in there and maneuver in the site is not possible. So what we've done here is put the loading off the side of the driveway, so essentially, uh, what would happen is the, uh, uh, delivery truck would come in, pull to the side here, this sidewalk and ramp area here is basically at grade, it's a very, uh, moderate grade going up to this crosswalk, then to get up to the delivery entrance, there's gonna be a ramp here to get the, um, deliveries to the service area, which is in this back corner of the building.
Right, so that corner, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, at the outset here, that looks like it's quite a bunch of pinching going on in there, so.
Yeah, and it's not really, it's not really meant so much, well, it's definitely not meant for the handicap access, we'll make that clear. It's, it's more meant for any, any parking that goes on over here, which is not gonna be the majority of the use, the majority of the use is gonna be in this area here and this area here, people are gonna wanna tend to park towards the front, the spit, the front entrance, which is over here.
And the bump out is a utility room, you said, so it's only open when you have to access?
But that's, but that's mov- that's moving right now. That's gonna move.
Okay.
That's gonna move on this corner right here.
Um, I, I guess my, my biggest question is the, the wall.
Which wall?
The wall, which goes all the way around.
Oh, you mean this wall?
Yeah, the big wall there.
Yeah.
So is that?
Necessary, yes.
Yeah, so I, I, is it going to be exposed, exposed wall as you drive in?
It's gonna be exposed to the interior of the site, yes.
Yeah, so.
What happens, I, I have a question about the shared parking situation that you've got, you've got, you don't quite have enough spaces on the, the pad site, right?
Correct, we have, we have twenty-six, thirty-two are required, and, and these six spaces here, it, we're just showing six spaces, but we need six spaces that are included as part of that shared parking that was established in the original site plan.
Is that workable on this site? I mean, you've got your main entrance drive here, people going down into Lowe's, right?
We don't think that we need them.
How many parking spaces are required?
Thirty-two.
So this is thirty?
No, thirty-two are required. Yeah, so based on.
This is my small.
Based on, you know, I'll show you the calculation.
Plus these. I'm just, I'm, in my head, I'm going back to that Dunkin', which is.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, when you, when you mentioned that, it was right away, I was thinking about this, and I was saying, well, you're gonna see the same, the same, um, result here, so, um, based on, based on the requirement, one space for every fifty square feet of patron space, you, you could see of the twenty, almost twenty-four hundred square feet, only eight hundred square feet is patron space. The rest of it is service space and whatnot, which there should be no parking for that, for a freezer or
Right, and.
And all that other stuff.
Right, so that's why when we get the floor plan, we, we don't include everything that's non-patron space, so.
I understand, but don't say that in the code.
Maybe we'll get to the twenty-four.
Yeah, yeah.
By the calculation that, that is reasonable. The other thing is, does Chipotle have some backup info, like, you know, what their
I'm sure we can get that.
Typical twenty-four hundred foot restaurant needs in terms of parking?
I'm sure we can get that.
That'd be helpful as well.
You go by the, uh, the, the, uh, the coffee, the Starbucks, there's a line around the building, no, no one's parking, they'll sit in the line waiting.
Yeah, nobody parks.
Okay, so we got, we got some room on the parking.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just showing you, we're addressing the code here, so.
If, if a tractor trailer can't get in there, can a fire vehicle get in there?
Yes, a fire, a fire vehicle can get in there, and it doesn't have to get in there, because it could pull right up, it, probably their choice is not gonna be to go into the.
They'll fight the fire from above.
Yeah. But it can, fire, we can get a, we can get a garbage truck in there, we can get a fire truck.
Have you talked to the fire inspector?
No. This is our first time.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, because if the fire truck falls in that spot, they're gonna stretch a hose to the back of the, the front of the building, it's, it's quite a distance, huh?
Okay.
Joe, what type of vehicle will be delivering, making the deliveries, we're talking about, are we talking about a tractor-trailer?
Fifty-foot tra- tractor, yeah.
And they'll be unloading from the side or the rear?
From the rear.
Because the rear of that trailer is gonna be past where that walkway is.
Yeah, we, we realize that, but that was about the best configuration we could come up with, you know, they're gonna have to skirt around it, that's pretty wide there. Um, so they'll have some room to get around.
Is there any way to do it further down? Yeah, couldn't you put it on the other side of the, the curb cut into the site?
Um, I think, I think that's probably okay, but then they would have to make their way up through the parking lot.
Yeah.
To get, to get.
Well, they're gonna have to, to do that anyhow to get out.
Well, the, the grade works a little nicer here, it's not as steep.
Right.
If, if we go be, further north on the other side of the entry.
Yeah, but if he's gonna be.
We're talking about a seven, a seven percent grade coming in there.
But if you're gonna be unloading that truck from the back, you're gonna basically be able to have it unload right into the, to the aisle of your parking area, which is gonna help you, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can look at that again.
I'm just concerned that that truck is not gonna be pulled into that unloading area as much as it, you'd like it to be, and, and you're gonna interfere with the traffic pattern.
Understood.
And that's where the contractors go in and out of to Lowe's, and that's gonna, you know.
We'll represent that on here and show, we'll, we'll see how, how it's gonna look.
Can I ask you a question while you're here? In the Lowe's parking lot, there's these like generator stanchions, what it looks like, lights above, what is, what's going on with that?
Something new that they're, sorry.
Sorry.
Hi.
How are you?
Good to see you all again.
You too.
Uh, it's something new they're experimenting with at a number of their stores, it's for security, they have security cameras on those. They also, at, at some, one point in time, they were, they had a loudspeaker and they were advertising specials, and we put an end to that, because we had gotten some complaints from the neighbors on Old Crampon. Uh, so right now, it's just for security, they've got a blue flashing light going, and they've got cameras up there just to monitor the parking lot.
Interesting.
Yeah.
They're looking for you. Before you, before you leave, I don't know if, if it's Lowe's or whether, whether it's your operation that has something to do with the, the parking assigned to combat vets, but my son-in-law's a combat vet, and I thank you on behalf of him to.
That's Lowe's, but, you know, we certainly endorse that, yeah.
So, that's very nice.
Thank you for his service.
Thank you. Alright, so we'll think you got a little work out of you.
All we got.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. I know you wanted Chick-fil-A.
Does, uh, does the town have any authority over those directory signs?
Yeah, there's a sign ordinance.
Have you looked at the directory sign on the Roma building lately?
No.
It's a good laugh.
What is it?
Yeah, I mean. Oh, go check it out.
It's ridiculous, and the, the, the other thing is that, you know, Sergio's here, you know, I think the only parking rights we didn't hit, well, was we, we reduced them for the commercial, because it was excessive, like you're getting a lot of parking area and no building in the distance, but the only thing we didn't address is the restaurants.
That's right.
Well, now, now with COVID having gone and coming back.
Alright, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Exactly, all of them paid.